Welcome to the City Council meeting of November 29, 2022, following the Thanksgiving holidays. We are back at it and we are ready to begin. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Al-Sadrion?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Kusakian?
Here. I'll ask everyone to rise and join me in the flag salute and remain standing for the invocation delivered by Reverend Cassie McCarty, Director of Mission Integration and Spiritual Care Services of Glendale Memorial Hospital. Please place your right hand before your, please place your right hand on your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Mayor, council members. So, in honor of Thanksgiving, I just wanted to offer this prayer. We have a very diverse city here in Glendale. So, I chose a prayer by a rabbi. This traditional Jewish blessing I bring to you. For the laughter of the children, for my own life breath, for the abundance of food, for the ones who prepare feasts, for the roof over our heads, the clothes on our backs, for our health and our blessings, for this opportunity to thank our friends and family, and for the freedom to pray these words without fear in any language, in any faith, in this great land, whose landscape is as vast and as beautiful as her inhabitants. Thank you, God, for giving us all these blessings. Amen. Thank you.
May we have your report or the clerk's report?
The agenda for November 29, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, November 22, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Let's have the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, December 6.
Good evening, Mayor Kusakian, member of the City Council. Next week will be a busy one. We have a number of meetings in the afternoon. We'll start off with a special meeting. That'll be regarding a Stage 1 preliminary design review for property located at 236 North Central Avenue. That'll be followed by a Glendale accessory agency meeting, and that would be regarding our fiscal year 2324 recognized obligation payment schedules. And the final meeting in the afternoon will be our Housing Authority meeting with one item on there, and that will be a resolution appropriation of $432,000 in new Section 8 housing voucher funds. That'll fund 27 new vouchers. The evening meeting has a number of consent items. The first will be a summary vacation of flood control easement located at property at, located at 1624 Arboles Drive, followed by another report regarding the same action, except the property over there will be a 2361 Gardner Place. At 4C will be a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding a Ward of Professional Services agreement with two laboratories. The first is WEC Laboratories, the other one's Eurofin Eaton Analytics, and that's for water quality analysis and reporting. Under action items, GWP will provide two separate reports. The first will be a status update on the request for proposal for local clean distributed energy resources per council's resolution, and the next report from GWP will be regarding EcoMotions' review of the Public Benefit Charge Program findings and recommendation. Final action item that evening will be from our Information Technology Department regarding a renewal of a Verizon wireless agreement. We'll have three separate hearings as well. The first two will be from Community Development regarding amendments to the 21 to 29 Glendale housing element previously adopted by council on February 1, 2022. The second hearing will be revisions to Chapter 30.26 related to advertising signage overlay zones and other miscellaneous text amendments. Final hearing will be from Public Works Department regarding a resolution ordering the vacation of a portion of an alley for the Stritches Crossing affordable housing project. And the last evening that night will be a report on our city's sanitary sewer CCTV assessment project.
Great. Thank you very much. We also have a few special guests with us in the chambers. I think this is probably the most mayors or former mayors we've had in the chambers at once, since we have with us former Mayor Vartan Garbedian joining us, I believe, with the Glendale Association of Realtors, and former mayor and current Assembly Member Laura Friedman, who's here to give a legislative update. Assembly Member Friedman? Welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to come and just give you a brief legislative update. I want to first thank all of you for your service to the city. As a resident of Glendale, I'm always proud of my council and of my city, and I really am thankful, since it's Thanksgiving, for the services that I get as a resident, for all of your service, for our staff, who I think is the finest staff anywhere, and to our first responders, of course, for their work keeping us all safe. So, I wanted this year, tonight, to just give you a very brief legislative overview of what I've been up to for the last year, and also what I was able to bring into the city of Glendale in terms of financial resources out of the budget this year. This year, we had a good year in Sacramento in terms of the budget, and I was able to secure nearly $15 million for the city of Glendale. That was based on the request that was made by the city council to my office, and I believe that almost every, if not every, budget request was funded this year, which is pretty unusual. Don't get used to it. Unfortunately, things may not always be so rosy in the budget. But I was able to secure almost seven, over six, six million dollars for the Glendale Central Library, and that's for the project that the library has been working on to re-hall the children's room and also to add a new teen resource center, which will be so important for our young people. And I really appreciate that this was Glendale's top budget request and my top budget request, because I always believe that your budget really shows your values, and the value of this city is to invest in its young people and in its children, and this library is going to go a long way in doing that. And with this money, the children's room is fully financed, and they're going to be going out to bid, I believe, maybe this month if they haven't already. So, that's really, really exciting. I was also able to secure $6 million for the Verdugo Wash Bike Path project. That's been a long time in the works in the city, and really looking forward to seeing that bike path to connect Montrose, La Crecente, and Glendale, to provide people a safe and protected way to ride their bikes so that they're not in and amongst traffic, and certainly to help our GCC students be able to securely bicycle, if they want to, to GCC campus without having to fight traffic on Verdugo and Mountain. I was also able to secure $2.5 million for the city to acquire open space in the north part of the city. So, looking forward to seeing what open space the city will identify and be able to move forward, because I know that open space preservation is really, really important in the city of Glendale. And lastly, $100,000 for the Glendale Fire Department for their fuel reduction work in the hillsides in Glendale to keep us all safe. Also, I do want to mention the $30 million that we've been able to put together in the last couple of years for the bridge to connect Glendale with a pedestrian and bicycle path to Griffith Park, to give people a chance to park on the Glendale side of the Wash and then to walk or ride their bikes just a matter of yards to be in Griffith Park. We have been working closely with Nithya Ramen in the City Council in Los Angeles to make sure that the LA City Council is going to upgrade their side of the potential bridge to be able to get people safely throughout the park. They have a shuttle, a circulator, in Griffith Park, and the plan is to create a new bus stop right there at the footing of the bridge, be able to take people to the Hollywood sign, to the zoo, all over Griffith Park, to all of the sites, the observatory, without people having to use their cars. So, really excited to see that move forward. And then in terms of legislation, I'm not going to mention everything. I'm going to mention the bills that I think probably have the most interest, as well as bills that didn't make it through that we may be working on again next year. First, AB 19, and these are not in any particular order, but AB 1933 is a bill that we worked on with Heritage Housing Partners and Habitat for Humanity, two nonprofit housing developers who work on low-income housing right here in the city of Glendale, who specialize in for-sale, low-income properties. And what this bill will do is it will allow for nonprofit developers who are building 100% low-income projects to be able to use the same tax incentive that they right now can use for rental properties to build more ownership properties, giving low-income and moderate-income individuals the chance to build equity, to develop roots, to develop the security that homeowners enjoy. AB 452 is a bill that I've worked on now for three years, and we now have it signed into law, that will require all school districts in the state of California to yearly notify parents about their responsibility to notify students, to notify parents of students about their responsibilities to safely store firearms. Accidental shootings of children is a huge problem in the country, with children almost every week in this country dying because they find a parent's unsecured firearm. And many of the suicides that happen in that age group happened because kids and teenagers are able to get their hands on their parents' guns, and the parents don't know, maybe don't know that the child is in mental distress. And unfortunately, some of the mass shootings that we've seen across the country were also the result of children getting their hands on family members' firearms. And in California, there's a responsibility to safely lock those weapons away from children, but unfortunately, not everybody does that, and we see that time and time again with kids finding guns and bringing them to school. This bill will require the school districts to notify parents of their responsibilities, and I hope they also notify them about the dangers of having those unsecured firearms, even if they think their children are mature enough to handle those weapons. They should not be in the hands of children. This bill had unanimous bipartisan support in the legislature, and I was really glad to see it move forward finally. AB 2309 allow, is about guardianships for foster youth. Every year that I've been in the legislature, we've done work to support our foster youth, who are some of our most challenged and vulnerable community members. This bill strengthens a legal requirement for courts to consider placements within family groups or within family friends when it's safe to do so, so that that child stays in contact with their family members, with their friends, with their siblings. We worked, again, we've been working with the advocates for foster youth on a number of bills, and I was really happy, again, to see this one get signed into law. AB 2097 is a bill about parking minimums, and I have to give a shout out to my Senate partner, Senator Anthony Portantino, who partnered with me on this legislation and was instrumental in getting it through the legislature. This bill says that for projects within a half a mile of major transit stops, being mostly train stops, that cities can't enforce any minimum amount of parking on commercial developments and on residential developments under 40 units or on 100% affordable unit buildings. And this is to give our high-quality transit that we've all invested billions of dollars in a chance to work, and also to allow to, more housing to be built in these areas where we have the infrastructure to remove cars. And, you know, housing is certainly the biggest crisis that we have in Los Angeles, and we need more housing, more than anything right now, and so I'm very hopeful that this bill will help to free up some capacity that we have in our city. AB 2344 is about wildlife connectivity. You know, I represent Hollywood in my district, and I have a lot of famous constituents, but I think my most beloved constituent is named P22, and that's a cougar who lives in Griffith Park. He's been misbehaving a bit lately, but we can forgive him. What this bill does is it will require Caltrans, when they look at major transportation projects, to think about whether they need to add a wildlife crossing to prevent not only migratory animals from getting killed in our highways, but to also help prevent the traffic deaths that occur every year when people collide with our large migratory animals like deer. Again, a bipartisanly supported bill. I didn't realize until one of my Republican colleagues from the northern part of the state got up and spoke about what a problem deer are for traffic safety in some of our rural areas with a lot of traffic deaths being caused by that. And so, this is a really common-sense approach, that as we're developing new roads and new infrastructure, see if there's migratory animals and build those crossings when it's economical to do so. The last bill I'll mention right now is AB 1909, which is our Omni Bike Bill, which makes a whole series of changes to the vehicle code to make it safer for cyclists to use the road. Then, I'm just going to mention a few bills that either didn't make it through the legislature or veto, just to give you an idea of what I've been working on. AB 2024 is a bill that came out of the experience of one of my colleagues, Loretta Gonzalez, and also my own personal experience about the lack of coverage for advanced breast cancer screenings. If you go in for a mammogram and your mammogram is irregular, and the doctor wants you to have more advanced screening, like an MRI, oftentimes insurance does not have the same caps that a mammogram has, and sometimes those imaging tests can be $5,000, $6,000, $7,000. So, at a time when a woman is already facing the thought of maybe having breast cancer, to then be told that you might have to choose between paying your rent that month or doing that advanced imaging, we just don't want to put women, particularly women, in that position. This bill would have capped those fees more in the range of a mammogram. That bill unfortunately was, didn't make it through the legislature. A bill that I may try to introduce again, AB 2336, is about using automated enforcement for speed control, so that in high-injury networks, places where we know we have a lot of traffic accidents, reckless driving and speeding, to allow with a lot of very strict parameters to allow for using automated enforcement. Now, if you're, the way the bill had been designed, if you're going to get a speeding ticket, you want to get this one, because the first ticket was a warning, the second was $50, no points on anyone's license, no facial recognition being used. The ticket would have gone to the car, like a parking ticket. Unfortunately, that bill didn't make it through the legislature. We may try again, because traffic safety is one of my top priorities. It has been, since I worked with you guys on the city council, and something we all need to do a lot more work on. We did a bill, AB 2664, about college coaches. I have a young staffer who's an athlete and was really horrified about the sexual abuse revelations about what was happening with some of our college coaches, and right now, there's no registry the way there is for a lot of other issues. So, if someone is dismissed for cause, a college coach who's, you know, molested, you know, having sex with their, their charges, who are underage, there's no list that goes on that says that that's why the person was dismissed. So, we were trying to come up with a way that there would actually be some recourse for schools to know when people were dismissed for that kind of misbehavior, or for taking bribes and the other things that we've seen. That bill also, we will continue to work on. Lastly, AB 2667 was a bill about distributed energy, something that I know is very important to all of you. And what this bill would have done is to set up a program where cities that were municipalities, like Glendale, that have their own utilities, would have had a grant program to install rooftop solar, a large rooftop solar on public buildings. That bill also didn't make it through the legislature. There is a pot of money that's available because of last year's budget for distributed energy, but there's no parameters on how that money is distributed. And I want to make sure that cities like Glendale that are looking to invest in alternative energy have a good chance of being able to go out and apply for that funding. So, we want to keep working on the distributed energy issue, because if you're in the Edison, if you're PG&E, you have a way of funding distributed energy, rooftop solar. But for municipalities, it's much, much harder. So, this would have been a way for the state to help you all reach your clean energy goals. And with that, I'll stop and see if you have any questions, but I, you know, again, want to thank you all for your partnership and for your, you know, incredibly hard work for the city.
To my colleague Swat. Go ahead, Councilmember Al-Sadrion.
Just want to say thank you for getting us the funding, for your impactful work on the state level on so many fronts. I think, especially with this council, looking at clean energy and distributed energy, as you work on these issues moving forward, however, I think we can be helpful in advocating for that and partnering with you. And I know that you also recently had an election, so congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your leadership in this space, and look forward to partnering with you as well.
Councilmember Brotman?
Well, thank you very much for all the, all the funds and for your legislation. So, on the, I mean, we've talked about this, you and I, a bunch of times on the speed cameras. So, you will bring, you will make another go with that?
I would love to make another go. I need to figure out what the obstacle has been and the reason why that bill hasn't been able to make it out of the Assembly Appropriations Committee. We've, we have worked to address the equity concerns to, you know, we had people from environmental justice communities, from, you know, communities where they have higher rates of pedestrian deaths, come and advocate for the bill. We were able to remove the opposition that had been in previous incarnations of the bill, and yet there's a roadblock somewhere internally, and so I need to work on that. I need to do some convincing. And any help you can give, if we do reintroduce it, we will need people to be loud and to talk about how important this tool is. And it's really about giving cities a tool to use to, on their most dangerous areas.
Right. Well, I hope you do reintroduce it, and I, and I want to thank you, because I know that this was a bill with, I think, six pilot cities, three in Southern California, three in Northern, and we were going to be one of the Southern California pilot cities, and we, we really need this. So, yeah, let us know what we can do to help, because I really want to see this happen.
Thank you. And yeah, I, as a resident, as someone with a young child in this city, I also feel that we really need tools. When we see how people are driving, the speed, we see the 30% increase in serious accidents and deaths across the state, we have got to look at this as a public health crisis at this point.
Right. And then I, I think you also had a bill that had to do with plastics in packaging. Was that this year, or was that?
I've been working on plastic pollution for a number of years. And so, we had a bill this year and last year that would have dealt with e-commerce, so plastic that gets shipped in through, pick your e-commerce company. And, you know, it's uneven. Some companies are really doing a lot to try to reduce their, their footprint and to be more sustainable, and others aren't. And I think all of us have had the experience of ordering, you know, a widget, a notebook, and having it come wrapped in reams of plastic, which, by the way, is not recyclable. I'm sure your Public Works folks can talk about how horrible it is when they get recycle bins filled with plastic film that just gums up the works and is not recyclable. So, we would have started to phase out the use of, of plastic film, because there are alternatives that are sustainable. Now, the reason that we ended up not moving the bill forward is because I was also the principal co-author of a bill called SB 54, 54 or 57, I'm terrible with numbers, that I've worked on for a number of years with Senator Ben Allen. And so, we were very much coordinating with both bills, and at a certain point, we decided that my bill was sort of folded into his bill as it was moving forward. And so, we're hoping that that effort has now encompassed the online shipping world, but it's certainly something that we can return to.
Well, thank you again for your dedication, and particularly to the environment, plastics, and clean energy, and lots of other things.
I think I forgot one environmental bill that you would appreciate, which is about PFOS, which is a forever chemical that's carcinogenic, that is routinely used in all manner of products. Last year, we were able to successfully ban it from being used in children's products. Believe it or not, it was sprayed onto children's clothing, children's toys, children would suck on it, suck on the clothing or the toys and get PFOS in their body, and we know it's carcinogenic. This year, we were able to successfully ban its use in personal care products. Yes, it's been put intentionally in lipstick, in eyeshadow, and this is not something you want in your body. And we worked with the personal care industry, who agreed that this was not something that they should be having in products anymore. And so, that will be phased out over the next few years in California as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I join my colleagues in thanking you for, just for the support that you give to our city, to Glendale. You have not forgotten us, and we're extremely grateful for the funding that you give, the legislation that you're getting through, and those, the legislation that you're working on. You're well-versed in so many issues, and it's, I'm just very proud to have worked with you on, on this council and, you know, in, currently and hopefully in the future. I too am interested in that automated enforcement. I hope that that, I would love to see that in our city. And I know one of your, your kind of sayings is we should be housing people and not cars. So, your legislation goes right along with your, your beliefs as well, in transportation, cycling, and the sustainability. So, thank you for all your help. I have one question. Does, have you spoken with Councilmember Ramen about when LA, that side of the bridge, to come, will be ready for our, starting construction? Because we're kind of ready, aren't we? City Manager Galanian, we're waiting for LA, aren't we?
Councilmember Devine, we are getting there.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we are working closely with the city of LA staff on coordination of, so that we can closely match the, the timing of the bridges.
Okay. Do, but do we have any idea, how far along are they in their preparation?
I don't have that information. Mr. Imroni may be able to shed some light on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We are working closely, as Mr. Galanian mentioned, with the city of LA, as well as with, with Assembly Member Friedman's office. We are in the environmental phase right now of that project, so we are probably a year and a half, two years away from, from the construction, start of the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Imroni, the question was the status of city of LA's project.
LA's, LA's side. How are they?
They, they are working with us as we're, as we make progress on the different phases. Like I said, we're still in the environmental phase, so we're not quite ready to ask them to move on, on those elements yet, but we are in constant communication with them. Once we get through this environmental phase, then we'll be accelerating that project at that point.
Okay. Then we'll start pushing them to get their side ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the question and the comments. And, you know, they really see this as an opportunity to get traffic off of Los Feliz Boulevard and Burbank as well, off of Victory. You know, there's a lot of really impacted surface streets, people trying to get into Griffith Park. And for those of us in Glendale, you know, taking the 134 is often kind of a daunting task, just to, if you want to go to the park. And I know the city has a park and ride pretty near where you're planning on putting the bridge. There's a lot of opportunity to provide parking for people, improve bike lanes, even from the Verdugo Wash. We also, I didn't mention, but we also got funding for the city of Los Angeles to build a bridge under the 134 to connect the end of Riverwalk with Outwater. So, there's a lot of really great connectivity coming along the So there's a lot of really great connectivity coming along the LA River and, you know, throughout the San Fernando Valley that we could create something very transformative. We, I also brought, I think it was $12 million into the San Fernando Valley, into their portion of the LA River. So we're on the cusp of creating a whole protected bicycle network along the Verdugo Wash and the LA River that's very transformative and very exciting.
Thank you for all that work. Amazing, amazing.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thanks for all your advocacy, bringing in the financial resources. It's great. And maybe help us with your colleagues in Burbank, our colleagues, your, I don't know what they would be to you.
Colleagues.
Constituents or, um, to make that BRT be a true bus-only dedicated lane. I think the winds may have changed a little bit, but let's make sure that, that that happens because that's going to be something very big that we're, that involves our city and of course Pasadena and Burbank. And they were a sticking point and I think now's a good chance with, I know you've been advocating for that, but now push them over the goal line hopefully.
I think that, given that you have one newly elected or about to be elected council member who practically ran on the BRT, I think that it's a really, I think there's a lot of positive movement. So happy to help in any way that, that I can.
That's very good. Thank you very much.
And thanks for all of your work on Metro Board, Metro President.
Well, Assemblymember, thank you. I echo my colleague's statements. Thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for coming here and presenting this update to us. We're grateful for all the funds that you've helped secure for Glendale for the various projects. Couple of questions that I had is in regards to sustainability and energy efficiency, this council took the lead on trying to reform and, and limit access to Mylar balloons, given what sort of a impact they have on our power lines and causing outages. The other day, you know, in driving to LA, I saw a clever billboard that Southern California Edison had put up with a squirrel hanging off of a Mylar balloon saying, you know, do not release Mylar balloons. I would think that there would be a state-level legislation that could be possibly passed to try and limit the access to Mylar balloons, given the impacts that it has and what we've seen happen with some of the terrible fires that can occur when power lines have, these Mylar balloons go into, you know, very dramatic explosions and fire and sparks everywhere. What can be done on the state level? What are you doing to help limit that?
I think it's a great idea and I'm glad that you guys are looking at it here in Glendale again. I had asked about it when I was elected in 2016 and I believe it was just the year before, Bill Cork from Hayward had introduced a Mylar balloon ban and it, it, I'm trying to think of some clever balloon pun, but it, let's just say it didn't pass. So it, yeah, it popped, whatever. So I, so we didn't think that the time was right to do it then because it had only been introduced the year before unsuccessfully, but I'll look at it again and I'm glad that you bring that up because anytime you all have bill ideas or you have needs in the city, please don't hesitate to, you know, pick up the phone and let me know. And this is the right time because between now and March, we'll be creating our legislative package and figuring out what bills we're going to introduce. So we'll absolutely take a look at that and, and see whether it's something that, you know, we think has a chance at this point with the new legislature. But I agree with you, you know, given the amount of fires that we have in the state right now, it seems like if there was ever a time to do things to decrease fire risk, this is the time. And maybe we, as a state, we weren't ready when Mr. Cork introduced it in 2014, but we might be ready now.
Well, I, I do think that, you know, with all the work that's being done to remove harmful plastics from the environment, they should not allow for balloons, Mylar balloons specifically. We don't want to ban all balloons, but Mylar balloons specifically to get a pass. We have limited them here in Glendale. You cannot buy them filled with helium. Unfortunately, you know, the atmosphere and the skies do not have, you know, restrictions for Mylar balloons to be brought in or to float in from other areas. So anything on a statewide level, I think, would be more effective than what we can do here in Little Glendale. And lastly, more often than not, the question that we receive from residents, as I'm sure you recall from your time on council, is some of the laws that are passed in Sacramento that strip local agencies away from their ability to control what is built where, when it is built. We understand that there's a statewide housing crisis, but it has also hampered our ability to protect some of our neighborhoods and our, our resources that we believe help maintain the quality of life here in Glendale. What is being done in regards to restoring some of the local control for agencies and cities to be able to determine what gets built, when and how and where?
Yeah, I think that that's been certainly a big push and pull over the last several years. You know, on the one hand, we also get asked, what are you doing about homelessness? What are you doing about housing prices? So there's a real schism because not every city has been a great actor when it comes to adding housing. And we all need to add housing. And I do believe, having come from local government, that cities do that best when they, when they look at their community and decide what areas need the redevelopment, could use the redevelopment, what areas are working well. But you also need to set those goals at the state level because when we don't, we find that the poorer cities, you know, the cities that are economically disadvantaged, end up taking the brunt of the development burden. And that's what's happened. And the cities that traditionally were redlined, the cities that are wealthier, don't add the development and don't add that, any of the density. And the result is that rent prices continue to skyrocket. And it's, you know, it really is, we've got the realtors here and they'll tell you, it's a game of musical chairs. If you have more and more people and don't increase the amount of housing stock you have, you get to a situation where the people that can pay the most are the ones that are housed and people who can't pay the most, who can't pay for that higher cost have to move further and further away. And we see that now with people moving further and further out into San Bernardino, in Santa Clarita, and commuting right here. You know, Burbank, next door, is a city that for many years was adding almost no housing. And yet they were increasing the amount of jobs in their community substantially to where at night, it's a city of 100,000 and during the day, it's a city of 200,000. So when you talk about impacts of traffic, congestion, of economic disparities, of just quality of life of people who have to spend two hours a day, three hours a day in their car, you see the need to add housing. And as much as we have some residents who say, I don't want, you know, my neighborhood to change at all, believe me, we've got plenty of residents who call us and say, I can't find a place for my children to live. My rent just got doubled or my rent went up substantially. What can I do about it? I can't find a place to live. There's a senior citizen in my building who can't afford the fact that her rent's been going up 10% a year for the past seven years. So we have to balance that. So we could say, hey, cities, you guys do everything, but if they're not acting, the state has a responsibility to act. So would I prefer that it's all done at the local level? Absolutely. Has that been happening? No. We see that it hasn't. Now, I think Glendale's been actually a pretty good actor and Glendale's added a lot of housing. When I was on the council, we entitled something like 5,000 units in the downtown. And it was done in a place where it made sense, it created economic development, it created a vibrant downtown that people want to go to. When I ran in 2009, one of the biggest issues people talked about was how there was nothing to do in Glendale at night. And if they wanted to go to the movies or to dinner, they had to go to Pasadena. Now, people from our surrounding communities come to Glendale because we have a lot to offer and we have a vibrancy in our downtown. And I think that that housing has a lot to do with that. Do I think we should be adding housing up in the hills where there's fire risk? No. And I didn't support SB nine and SB 10 for that reason because I think the locality should have more of a say in that. But I do think that there's always going to be this balance until we have our housing and our population more in balance.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
I appreciate all of you again and, you know, again, thanks for your service. And one last thing I'll say is because of redistricting, I no longer am representing all of Glendale. I have a colleague who's going to be representing basically from Duran going south named Wendy Correio. She's a very good friend of mine and I know she's going to be a very good friend of yours. But whatever you need, no matter where it has to do within Glendale, I will be there for you. So again, thanks for having me tonight and thanks for all of your work.
All right. Thank you very much, Assemblymember, and you're welcome to come back anytime, give us updates and look forward to hearing from your colleague as well. Let us now move on to the balance of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is item four. Can you please read that into the record?
Four will be consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
All right. Would anyone like to make the motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Al-Sadrion?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda.
City Council and staff comments.
All right. Let's start with my colleagues who would like to go first.
I want to just say, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And what I did to kind of work off the Thursday meal was I went on a really wonderful hike to the top of Mount Lucans. And I went with our retired police chief, Carl Pavolitis, and another resident named John Hamkins, who lives right near Duke Magin Park and hikes this every month. So he made sure we didn't get lost. It's a wonderful, a wonderful walk. It's not really that hard. It just takes a long time and, and the views are incredible to Catalina and, and all over. So I really recommend it. It's a treasure that we have in our backyard, probably doesn't get used that much. And if anybody wants to go, I would hike it again. Give me a month or two to, to recover, but I'll do it again.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Devine, go ahead.
Well, this being the season of Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays coming up and today is Giving Tuesday, I want to send out a special thank you to Marion Getz. Those of you in the real estate community know her well, but I want to thank her because she delivered meals to the homeless on Thanksgiving. She went from Doran all the way down to Colorado and the Riverwalk. 26 people she fed, she fed in the Riverwalk, 26 homeless, plus 12 under the bridge. And so I just want to say that she's an example of a, a giving person and that's exactly what we need at this time of the year. So thank you, Marion. I don't know if you're watching, but those of you that know her, you can all, when you see her, just thank her because that was a, a very, very generous and understanding gift. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Al-Sadrion?
I think there was like a long list of events that we all attended, so I'm going to spare everybody's time, but I did want to mention the Montrose tree lighting ceremony that my colleagues and I attended, which is beautiful. And I just wanted to thank the Montrose Shopping Association. There are two events that are coming up. I wanted to inform everyone. The IAM Charity Foundation is hosting a Comitas Quartet, which is a classical music concert. It's going to take place on December 9 at 7:00 PM at Presbyterian Church of Glendale. And you can get tickets at iamfoundation.com. And then on Thursday, December 8, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM, I'll be serving on a panel that's hosted by the Consulate General of Japan in Los Angeles in collaboration with Japan House. It's entitled World Assembly for Women in LA, Women's Essential Role in an Inclusive Society. I'd want to invite our women and girls to join in and participate. And then I have one item that needs a second. I'd like for us to see if we can host an annual Small Business Week, which would provide networking, educational workshops, resources for small businesses, and getting our small businesses to get certified as minority and women-owned businesses. I believe the, the week is May 7 through 13 in 2023. I'm hoping we can get a report from staff on what it will take for us to put this together and if it's possible for us to have this in time for us to maybe, if we do have consensus with my colleagues, to kick this off in 2023.
I'll second that idea. See what it would take and see if, how we can best do it. Councilmember Najarian?
Just kick me if I'm stealing your thunder, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, we have a tree lighting. Were you going to talk about that?
Uh, no, I was going to, but please.
I'll give that to you.
I have plenty of other things to mention. I've already been accused of being loquacious, so please.
So Thursday, everyone, at Parter Plaza here at Glendale City Hall, back porch, if you will, we are holding our city Christmas tree lighting event. It starts at 6:00 PM. There will be singers and carolers and some performances. The mayor will be lighting the trees, tree, and it's already decorated quite nicely and it's a great opportunity. I think we'll have hot chocolate in paper cups, none of this plastic stuff anymore. So it's a great opportunity for everyone. I'm going to leave the Christmas parade for you. And it's going to be rainy perhaps this week. Was that, were you going to talk about that?
Not the weather, but I was going to talk about the Christmas parade, but.
About the sprinklers.
No, no, please, go ahead.
Okay, so, so with approval of the mayor, of course, he's on the MWD board and water is one of his fortes. We're going to get some rain perhaps Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's a great time to turn off your sprinklers. Once the rain comes, let it soak in your ground for perhaps a week and then get back on the cycle again. It's these little things, if we all do, that's going to help us get through our eternal drought situation that we have. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. I've turned off my sprinkler. My lawn looks healthy-ish. It died when we were supposed to turn it off during the maintenance project that was done, but in little spots, the green is coming back without any sprinklers. So thank you for that public service announcement. This weekend is the annual Montrose Christmas Parade. So come on out this Saturday and support the shopping park, partake in a wonderful tradition that's been going on for 44 years. The parade starts at 6:10 PM, so get there early, do some shopping, support the local businesses, definitely bundle up, maybe bring an umbrella, get some hot cocoa and cheer on your neighbors and community members as they make their way down a very festively decorated street in the Montrose Shopping Park. Yes, and we have our own Christmas tree lighting here at the city. I want to thank my colleagues for attending the one in Montrose. I was not able to be there because of personal obligations and family event. But if you do come down to City Hall, if you get here a little early, come inside City Hall or walk around the plaza. You'll see one of our city staff members, Chris Peplo and his staff, have outdone themselves yet again with a beautiful City of Glendale Christmas village. All of the homes have been built up to code with the approval of the North Pole Design Review Board, I've been assured. But it looks absolutely adorable, so come out and enjoy that. Also, I want to congratulate our nation's soccer team for defeating Iran today in the World Cup match by a score of one to zero. And there's been a lot in the press recently about this match leading up to it, but there has also been even more attention about what has been taking place in Iran with protests and clashes with authorities. I've been asked by members of our community and the Iranian community at large where Glendale or where I stand on the issues of these protests. Let me just say that Glendale is no stranger to the politics of Iran, as many of our residents trace their familial roots back to Iran and are all too familiar with the repressive regimes, whether it was under the period of the Shah or the post-revolution governments. This past September, a 22-year-old woman, Masahmini, died while in the custody of Iran's police in charge of enforcing morality codes and who are tasked with enforcing the strict rules of dress codes for women in Iran. The rules mandate covered hair and loose-fitting clothing for females. And it is believed that Amini was taken into custody for what was perceived to be a minor infraction or not an infraction at all and severely beaten by officers and later fell into coma and died. As a parent and as a human being, I believe we should all, all condemn such acts of brutality and support those who wish to live their lives freely without repression, violence, and restrictions on their basic human rights. And I stand with the brave women of Iran who are calling for their government to heed their cries and change, heed their cries and change so that brutality never visits another person again. All people have the right to basic freedoms, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. And no government should use violence against its own citizens, no matter where in the world or who is in charge. So let's pray for those who are raising their voices right now to be heard and hope that peace and freedom will prevail. And I think I speak for all of us when I say that. I think we all have great sympathy for what is happening in Iran and for the people who are crying out for that, those changes. I also want to remind folks that there have been many reports about food banks across the region running very low on food. And without bringing in those who provide help here to City Hall to make that plea, allow me to make that plea to my own neighbors. allow me to make that plea to my own neighbors now here from this podium and ask you if you have anything to spare, if you collect some canned foods while you're shopping for your family, shop for someone else and help restore some of our own food banks here. Those include the Salvation Army, which just had their red kettle kickoff. When you see those red kettles and the people with the bells, stop in and make a donation. Catholic Charities, which has for many, many years done incredible work, and I believe Glendale Community College has a food bank now that for the last few years has been providing food to those in need. So please support the food banks. This is the season for giving, and we have an incredibly generous community that I know will rise up to the challenge. And thank you for everyone that's doing everything, from collecting toys to trying to spread holiday cheer in your own way. So with that, the last thing I want to ask for, and I'd like to ask a second, is for a report on the cost-benefit, a cost-benefit analysis. Recently, we went through the Verdugo Wash Project here. There was a report done and a direction given by the council by vote, but I believe that it would be, it would warrant and it would be important for us to have a report to look at the cost-benefit analysis of the phases of the project. So I'd like to see if there's a second for that.
I'll second that.
Okay. I thought you were going to.
I have to speak from the dimes.
Okay. Are you sure? Would you like to say?
I cannot.
Okay. Has that been already stamped? So one of my colleagues, who was otherwise precluded, wanted to submit a card to step down and speak from the podium. I don't think something that's been done before, so.
Not recently.
Not recently. So in lieu of that, I brought up Councilmember Najarian's concern myself, and it has received a second, so it will be agendized and brought back. Yes, Mr. Galan?
Mayor Kasakian, member of City Councils, if you're done with your comments.
I am.
We just have a couple of announcements to make. I don't mean to rain on the parade of the Christmas tree lighting, the holiday tree lighting at the Partridge Plaza, but there's a chance, based on the forecast, it may be canceled. We won't know until tomorrow. On that note, because of the forecast, I'm going to ask Mr. Imroni to share with the public the locations of the sand and sandbags for protection from storms that are forecasted.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Mayor, members of council, with the impending weather forecast, we just wanted to inform all of our residents that we have plenty of sands and sandbags ready to go at several locations. They are at Donsmore Park, which is at 4700 Donsmore Avenue, at the Chevy Chase Library parking lot, and at Brandt Park. And we also have sandbags available at our Public Works Yard, which is at 541 West Chevy Chase Drive, as well as at different fire stations. We would just advise our residents to bring their own shovel and it's self-help. They can pick up their sand and bags and be ready for any issues that might happen with the rain, potential rain. Thank you very much.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, are we expecting a significant?
Mayor Kasakian, member of City Council, the last forecast that I checked gave a 40% chance on Thursday and Friday and potentially Saturday. So.
A larger accumulation?
Right. Mayor Kasakian, we have one more announcement, if I may.
Please.
I'm going to invite Chief Ernst to announce an upcoming public meeting.
All right, Chief Ernst, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, councilmember staff, and community members. My name is Tim Berns, Fire Chief for the City of Glendale. And in the midst of the talk about the rain, which we all welcome, I want to remind everybody that normally, November, December, and even into January, those are still our wildfire preparedness months. Those are the months where the Santa Ana winds creates some of our biggest wildfire threats. So with that, on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department, I would like to announce and invite the public and the community members to the Glen Oaks Canyon Wildfire Response Preparedness Presentation, which will be two weeks from tomorrow, Wednesday, December 14, from 6:00 till 8:00 PM at the Glen Oaks Elementary School. I won't take the time now to read through the eight topics that you'll find listed on the agenda here. I think you'll find it both interesting and informative. There are handouts in the back of the room in English, Armenian, Spanish, and Korean to cover all of our community bases, and any further information might be available via Instagram or some other social media outlets. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. And again, this will be an important meeting. I've heard from residents in the canyon about evacuation, what happens if schools in session, how do parents get to their kids? So this would be a good opportunity for people to get answers, to be prepared, and to be safe. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Mayor Kasakian, Councilmember Sargent also reminded me of two upcoming public meetings that I'd like to make a mention of.
Yes.
Tomorrow, November 30, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there'll be a community open house related to the proposed Shoal Canyon Biogas Project, and this will be held at the Civic Auditorium. And then on December 3, starting at 3:00 PM, we'll have multiple driving tours of the Shoal Canyon landfill. And last but not least, the future of the landfill, open space, and recreation uses. We have a meeting scheduled for December 7, starting at 4:30 PM at the Joel Bridges Clubhouse on Glen Oaks Boulevard. Thank you, Mayor Kasakian.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is community event announcement, three-minute portion. We have five speaker cards.
All right. The first card is from Michael Matsuda.
Mayor, thank you so much for being here. My name is Michael Matsuda. I'm president and founder of the Martial Arts History Museum, which is located in the city of Burbank. It's been about a month or two since I last spoke here about it, and I think moving the museum to the city of Glendale will make a nice addition to the other museums already here. We can be the Mecca museums this side of Los Angeles here. Since the last time I've been here, I've had the pleasure of meeting with Senator Portentino on this project, with Catherine Barger, with Mayor Ardi Kasakian, thank you, sir, and Councilman Mayor, Member Daniel Bratman, thank you very much. They have been extremely generous, thank you, and have expressed support for the move, and I thank them for that. I am currently in talks with Congressman Adam Schiff and Assemblyperson Laura Friedman. I think she's left already, but that's all right. It is my hope to meet with each one of you to further discuss moving forward on this project. In brief, the Martial Arts History Museum is an Asian cultural facility, teaching young people about Asian art, history, culture, music, tradition through the martial arts. It is sharing the positive contributions of the Asian-American community that continues to have an influence on Western society. But we are also a humanitarian museum as well, because we feel it's important to be contributing to the community that we're part of. While we are now in the city of Burbank, we have held anti-Asian hate events, anti-bullying events, gathered uniforms for lower-income communities, held free classes for women's empowerment, special classes to learn a new trade, and free photography classes, free classes on writing books, and how to use the Internet as well. Our goal is to locate a 15,000-square-foot facility so that we can not only house a theater, but will be large enough to handle thousands of kids each and every day. Currently, our museum is too small to handle the required visitation, which is about 90 kids at our facility, so we need a new place to handle busloads of kids. Through a new location, we can extend our humanitarian efforts by having courses on fighting diabetes, self-defense, learning better eating habits, CPR courses, all things actually connected with martial arts, plus a section on the impact of Armenian martial arts figures. We have found three locations here in the city of Glendale, but each of them have either been sold or leased or are in escrow right now. We waited too long. But with your support, we could find other locations that will be more suitable for the community. This is a great opportunity to make an impact, to be the home of the world's first and only museum in the world, right here in the city of Glendale. We are not new. We are not starting from scratch. In fact, this is our 23rd year as a museum. So we won't, it's not a three-year plan or a five-year plan. It's only a few-months' plan. We can be up and running. Matter of fact, we have a ton of stuff in storage ready to put out. We can be up and running. So anyway, just a reminder, with hopes to meet with each of you to make this happen. Someone asked me why I think the museum should move to Glendale. I said, Glendale is a mover. They are a city about action. They make things happen. They make a difference, and I would like the Martial Arts History Museum to be a part of that. Thank you all very much.
Councilmember Devine?
So I have a question for the city manager. So the stumbling block here is finding 15,000-square-foot location.
Mayor Kasakian, member of City Council, Councilmember Devine, that is the biggest challenge we currently have that our economic development team is working on.
Okay.
We're currently in the 2,000-square-foot now.
So if you find a place, 15,000-square-foot, you'll rent that and move, right?
Yeah. Well, we're trying to work with you guys to help us with funding, you know? We just don't have a lot of money.
There's another challenge.
Yeah. We've been closed for two years because of the governor's order to disclose, and that's two years of not having any money coming in. And then plus our reserves, we had to make up for those two years. So that's a lot of funding that went out in just the two years. So we need your support, and we need your help to move this.
I see.
Thank you, Mr. Matsuda. Appreciate it.
I was going to say, because I couldn't help you find a 15,000-square-foot location. Thank you.
I do recommend that we have a number of Realtors in the audience on your way out. I recommend getting some cards from some folks who may have some better ideas than we may. But thank you very much for coming in. I do think it would be great if we did have a museum here in Glendale. And all museums we have are important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and I hope you will come by as my guest to the museum.
Thank you. Damian Sullivan?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you for having me. Ellen, good evening. Paula, great to see you. Laura, always great to see you. Dan, is that your bike out there in the lobby? I appreciate you letting me take three minutes of your time in advance of what will probably be a series of conversations that will be happening in the coming weeks on a new topic that's an old topic, that's, I think, an important topic, and it's what's going to be happening with the Sears property. As I drove here tonight, you know, I drove down Brand Boulevard, and the Christmas decorations are beautiful, and the new snowmen that are lit up in the center median, it's just, it's a beautiful town, and we have a great city. And that's one thing that I loved, living in Glendale for 40 years, is I tell everybody, I live in a great city. And I would like to invite you in the coming weeks, as we talk about how we future develop other properties that will obviously impact the city for many years, to take a thoughtful approach to what kind of development we have, the developers that come in and want to be our partners, develop with our city. The Sears building, I know it's been brought up for landmarking conversations, but I don't think it's ever been really properly examined for its historical significance to commerce, to the city of Glendale. In its time, it was a monumental landmark building by famous architects that was considered to be what would be our version of the Americana back then. It really created an enormous footprint in the city, and there's a lot of history there. Other great cities that I've heard many of you talk about how you have visions for Glendale and you would like for us to see what other cities are doing, take that into account as we see what we can incorporate into how we govern our city and create things for our city. Other cities are taking these Sears Towers, of which these are very architecturally significant. This is a 1930s, machine-age, Art Deco, late-modern masterpiece. It doesn't look like much right now. That's what you hear everybody saying, and that is true. It doesn't look like much right now. But if I told you that there's a high possibility that behind what are boardups in that tower and where the windows used to be, as with other Sears buildings that look almost identical to that tower around the United States, they have been just covered with the facade, and beneath them are those masterpiece Art Deco elements. And other cities like Houston, if you see the ION complex, there are cities, Boston is another one, they've taken these Sears buildings and they have adaptively incorporated them. You can still have an amazing multi-use, you can have 680-some apartments, you can have restaurants, but you can also keep what's an important piece of the history of the city intact. And as in Boston, where, Ardi, I know you come from, what's wonderful about Boston is how they manage to just creatively blend the old and the new and have it coexist. And it's, something is gained, not lost, by keeping pieces. I'm not saying keep the whole building, don't build the Merlone project. I'm saying, let's be thoughtful about what we do, because once something is gone, that's a revolutionary story. It was called Being Built From the Inside Out, and it set the tone. It was the first store in America to be built from the inside out around the merchandise. It's a historic building, it's been written about in many, I'd be happy to share with any of you if you want to pursue it further. If a developer comes to be a partner with our city, I think it's their responsibility to be a partner with our city, and I think we should give them the keys, but give them the keys and keep a portion of, you know, the city for the people who live here.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. And 50% chance of rain, so hope to see you on Thursday. Thank you for hearing me.
Look forward to it. Thank you. Karen Cockler?
Yeah, pretty good. So this is my first time here, so I'm so nervous now, and I wasn't when I came in, because I felt, oh, I have so much to say, this is so important, and now I'm, okay, so thank you for having me and giving me this opportunity, and I see my time. So I'm a resident here in Glendale, and I love it here, and I'm delighted to hear all these things that are going on, the decisions you make, the sustainability, all those important things. And so I am a student at GCC currently, and I opened a student club for social equity allyship, because I felt, and part of that club is that I wanted to put a vigil on on campus grounds to commemorate the victims of hate crimes. And most recently, the LGBTQ community in Colorado Springs riveted through the nation, and I felt we should really have a conversation about nonviolence and how to keep not only this marginalized community safe, but all the others that also could potentially be victim of hate crimes. And you all almost come from every, like, all over the world, which is, I'm from Germany, but I was born here, and I just want to afford everyone the feeling of safety and belonging, which is a human right that we all have, the right to be and the right to wear, the right to speak, the freedom of speech, everything is protected here in this country, fortunately. And I've wanted to look for a speaker, and at GCC, I couldn't find anybody who knows anything to say about nonviolence. So I thought, wow, the city of Glendale, maybe they have someone for, like, someone who would stand and come and speak for five to 10 minutes. And then I found out there is nobody in here in the city of Glendale who would be standing for marginalized communities that have a need for social equity. And so I wanted to bring this, and say, how can I make people aware that the cause of all problems in the world is the lack of ability to solve conflicts? And I was a preschool teacher, I have my own business in Eagle Rock, and I'm a trained nonviolence and trauma-informed parent and child educator, and I have taught children how to resolve conflict so that everybody feels valuable, feels seen, feels heard, their voice matters, and there are no differences of supremacy of any kind. And I said, even I, I have the same value as you guys. I may be older and I have more life experience, so I can keep you safe, but ultimately, oh, shoot. Okay, but ultimately, we need to educate children, and not just children for nonviolence, but we should have an office in our city, I feel, and also on campus, and so adults can learn a method of nonviolence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have your contact info. I think that there are resources, and there should be resources, at Community College. We can try and explore and connect you to individuals or the school district. But thank you very much for coming and speaking out on that. Next speaker, we have our Glendale Association of Realtors who would like to speak. Carmen, please come up and invite up with you anyone else that is going to be speaking? I know that you came with friends, so welcome.
I did. I came with my backers. I got your back. Okay.
Carmen, please come up and invite up with you anyone else that is going to be speaking? I know that you came with friends, so welcome.
I came with my backers. I got your back. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of Glendale City Council, city manager and city staff. My name is Carmen Arum. I'm the 2023 president of Glendale Association of Realtors. And how appropriate that we are here on this Giving Tuesday because we want to share with you, the council and the greater community in Glendale, the results of our charitable efforts for this year. Every year, Glendale Association of Realtors raises thousands of dollars to support our local nonprofit organizations as well as the charities. And in the past two or three decades, we have raised and contributed over hundreds of thousands of dollars to these local charities. This year, we were able to raise $30,000 through a couple of events that we held. And the organizations that we support are Glendale Education Foundation, the STAR Program in partnership with the Police Department, Veterans Village, the Salvation Army, and the Food Pantry at Glendale Community College. And the reason why I've asked my colleagues to be here because these are the members of our Public Relations Committee. The chair of our committee is Vartan Garabedian. Ani Damie is with lawyer's title. And Talin Bagdassarian is with Chicago title. And these people have worked very, very hard in order for us to raise those much-needed funds for our supported organizations. I mentioned STAR Kids Program. In addition to a monetary contribution that we make every year to them, we also have given them scholarships to attend summer camps for Christmas and holidays. We're giving each kid, which is about 20 children, $75 gift cards for their expenditures. And they had an opportunity to go to Disneyland this summer and we gave them each $50 spending money. Also in 2020, the Glendale Association of Realtors contributed $120,000 to the Armenia Fund during the war in Artok to support the situation there. And we have also contributed $2,500 to Glendale Clean and Beautiful this year. Also, we have worked with Habitat for Humanity, partnered up with them to build housing for low-income families. So the goal of our visit here today is to let you know some of the other things that we are involved with in terms of support of our community and our local charities, and we're very proud of doing so. I'd like to invite you next year to attend some of our events and see firsthand what we do in order to raise these much-needed funds. And I thank you all. One more last point, if I have the time. We are partnering with the Fire Department, the Glendale Fire Department this year, ABC7, and Community Services and Parks and their toy drive. So all of our realtors are going to bring a new and unwrapped toy so that we can collect it and give it to the needy children, bring a smile to their faces. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be here in front of you tonight, and I hope to see you at our upcoming events. Thanks a lot.
Great, thank you. There's a comment from Councilmember Devine.
I just have a comment. You know, we hear from a lot of nonprofits and what they do around the city and how generous they are and how hard they work to provide funds for other nonprofits. But we've, I don't know that we've ever heard from the realtors. So I appreciate you coming in tonight and letting us know, letting those that are watching at home know that you are out there, you are working for this community, you are generous, and, well, much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Devine. I really appreciate those comments. Yes, we're not doing a very good job of touting our own horn. We don't, we don't just sell houses. We, you know, we do a lot more than that. And thank you for acknowledging that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead. We're fine. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I think Carmen Arum, our president-elect, mentioned exactly what you're here for, but I just want to add to her comments that we have other board members on our PR committee, Hilda Lafarla, Vivian Gee, and Armin Avidiyan that work really hard along with the rest of the members to host events and put together events to raise funds for worthy charity organizations in Glendale. And I want to mention Ani Damie. I think her blood type is.
Oh, yeah.
Her blood type is a STAR kids. She is raising money every week.
Antihypertensive.
Antihypertensive, I'm sorry, antihypertensive, yeah. Both of them. They're sisters from another mother. So I think, I think they are, they work really hard to help our kids in our community. And again, we are, we are not just, we just don't sell houses and buildings. We are a community organization. We are, what do they call it? A community, not a community, a commercial citizen, as they call it, or business citizen, as they call it.
Corporate citizen.
Corporate citizen. Thank you, Mr. Senator, and Councilmember Senator. And we are, most of us live and work and play in Glendale, and we want to thank you for your hard work as well. And I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. And if we don't see you, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year and Happy everything and everything you believe in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna add one more thing with all of us. Every Tuesday, Talin and I, rain or shine, we're there at the STAR, right? We get sponsors. We love for you guys to come one of these Tuesdays and watch how the kids love all this food that we prepare. Some prepare it, we buy it, but it's our joy to see these children. And I would love to invite you to come every Tuesday, but call us. We don't have sponsors.
But next, next two weeks, we'll be there. And the 13th will be a big one for the kids, just because it's their last day. Yeah, it's their last day.
Well, let us know. Yeah, let us know, and I'm sure we'll be there.
13th, December 13th.
We will send your name out and notify you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate everything that you do as well. And I believe that are, those are all the comments, cards for event, community event announcements and oral communications. I do not wish to speak for five minutes. Mr. Murphy, I believe you're holding your powder for the five-minute portion at the conclusion? Got it. All right, so with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is action items. Can we please have 8A read into the record?
8A, Police Department, regarding Police Department in-car video system addition interview room camera modernization and digital evidence migration. One resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the city manager or designate to execute an amendment to the agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of camera equipment, related software, maintenance and storage, parts and professional services for the life of the equipment, adding $230,000 to the contract for a new not-to-exceed amount of $1,980,000.
Mr. Galanian, staff?
Council, Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council. I was just going to ask Lieutenant Riley, Lieutenant Sean Riley, for those of you who haven't met him before, to present this item for your consideration.
Sir Riley?
Mayor Kasakian, councilmembers, city staff, thank you for having me this evening. So I'm a police lieutenant assigned to our investigative services division. I'm also our fleet manager and been involved in all of our, a lot of our technology acquisitions for the last, like, 15 years. So the Police Department has asked of your authorization to amend our current five-year contract with Axon Enterprises, which council approved in 2019. And the Police Department currently has software, hardware, technical support, and services through Axon Enterprises, such as our body worn cameras, our in-car video, our tasers, our drones, and then evidence.com, which is the platform that takes all the evidence from those devices, stores it, allows us to audit it, manage it, and then transfer it and share it with the LA District Attorney's Office as well as our other law enforcement partners. And so this particular amendment will add 16 in-car video systems to our current inventory, allowing for certain unmarked enforcement vehicles as well as our parking enforcement vehicles to be outfitted with cameras and allow for us to have a couple on the shelves as spares that we can swap if we have issues with them. As you all know, this is important for transparency and community trust. Really, the expectations now are that all these interactions with Police Department personnel are recorded, and it's really become the norm in society. So we'll also be replacing nine interview room cameras, three of which are located in our jail. We have five in our Criminal Investigations Bureau on the third floor. We have one more system on our second floor to support our Field Services Division. And these new cameras will allow for supervisors and managers to remotely monitor interviews in real time. And then once that interview is concluded, it will seamlessly transfer securely to evidence.com where, again, we can house it and manage it and audit it fully, fully has audit trails. The current cameras we have are over 10 years old. They're not supported by the vendor any longer, and they're just, they're end of life. They've become very problematic for staff. And so lastly, we require professional services to migrate about two terabytes of data from a legacy software platform into evidence.com. Again, so it can be securely stored and then shared with the District Attorney's Office and our other law enforcement partners, which we can't do it now on the current platform. We actually have to burn hard copies or put them on thumb drives and actually walk them and mail them places. So that becomes very cumbersome for staff as well. So this particular amendment will add $230,000 to the, our existing five-year contract with Axon Enterprises for a total amount to exceed $1,980,000. And this will align all of our products and services with Axon Enterprises so that they're all on the same schedule and they're all together. And then this obviously includes all the warranty, hardware, support, and technical services from Axon. You have any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Do any of my colleagues have questions? Any comments?
I'll move the item. It's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, Lieutenant Riley, in making the presentation. Would anyone like to second?
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion was made by Councilmember Devine, seconded by Councilmember Brotman. May we have roll call, please? Councilmember Al-Sadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kasakian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public Works Regarding Professional Service Agreement for Professional Engineering Services for Central Park Block Project. One motion authorizing the city manager or a designate to enter into and execute a professional service agreement with David Volt's Design Landscape Architects Incorporated to provide professional engineering services for the Central Park Block Project in the amount of $1,394,571, plus a 10% contingency of $139,457.
All right, Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, the hiring of a landscape architect is the next step in moving forward with this very exciting project on that block of Central Park in conjunction with the Armenian-American Museum that is currently under construction. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Imran, our Director of Public Works, to present that item for your consideration. And Mr. Calvert, our Community Development Director, is available to respond to questions regarding the design concept of this park. Mr. Imran?
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a very exciting project that's been in the works for the last six years, and we're very excited to finally be moving forward with it in conjunction with the construction of the Armenian-American Museum. The Department of Public Works issued an RFP for the selection of a design consultant for the design of the Central Park Block. And we received two proposals and made a selection for, of David Volt's Associates. They're very experienced in designing parks and have done projects, several projects for city of Glendale previously. The, what we're asking is for the council respectfully to approve the authorization for us to award the contract to David Volt's Associates so we can move forward and keep pace with the construction of the museum. The goal is to finish the project, our project, and coincide with, to coincide with the completion of the museum or shortly before. And with that, be happy to answer any questions or if you're interested in some background on this project, my colleague, Mr. Calvert, can provide some additional information.
Do my colleagues have questions? Councilmember Najarian?
I have a question. I don't know if you want us to get into the weeds with you at this point, but I thought we didn't like palm trees. Didn't we remove palm trees from our tree pallet? And I see, even though on slide three, page three, it says they're existing palm trees. I think now would be the time to get rid of them. I mean, we decided that. I think that was part of our.
I had actually raised that during the staff briefing as well, and I was told that because of the physical.
We didn't talk to each other. This is independent minds coming to the same conclusion.
I can attest to that. All right, so can we go to that slide maybe, or can staff address that issue? I think during one of the briefings, it was said that it was a design element, but I think a good point has been raised.
Mr. Mark Berry of our Community Development Department can respond to that question?
Sure. That is not part of the scope of the project. That's actually an existing condition. That was part of the Paseo project about eight years ago.
Well, I don't care what the other councils did. This council wants to put real trees in there.
Well, again, it's not part of the park. It's, again, it's not part of the project's.
I understand. We're not busting. But we're saying maybe it'd be a good time to, to give some direction to find a replacement for those nice, you know, canopy, you know. You gave us the report a month ago, and I think we were all very supportive of your ideas for the tree pallets. I mean, that's just.
Well, one council member has expressed, well, two council members have expressed their concerns about palm trees. Is that something shared by any of my other colleagues as well to give direction?
I support doing an upgrade there.
All right, so.
Thank you for.
No palm trees.
Shade trees.
Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, again, as a reminder, like Mr. Berry mentioned, those palm trees are outside the scope of this project. So if that's council's desire, we'll have to go back and get a, get a cost estimate of how much it'll cost to remove them because they're, they're healthy and mature and what would cost to, to replace them with a, another species.
Okay. Let's get that, and then we can, we can visit this issue and look into it again, depending on cost, yes.
And they can be relocated, can't they? I mean, they would.
Councilmember Devine, that will be part of the report I will bring back.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I was just, yes.
Just one more. Councilmember Al-Sadurian, and then Councilmember Devine.
I just have one question with respect to the east side of, the east side of the museum and how you guys are going to be working with the museum site. I know the portion that was taken out, that was going to be a café. Is that going to be leveled up or how's that gonna work hand in hand with the museum and their design?
The portion of the café has actually been cut from this scope of the work right now. Mr. Berry, do you have more information on what that will look like since we're taking the café part out?
Sure. The museum, there's actually not an entrance from that Paseo that's on the east side. So really, the challenge is matching the grade from Colorado into the central part of the park. Really, the, what the reduced scope does is it keeps the existing condition of the southwest corner of the ARC with the elimination of the pavilion. And then there's, again, tweaks to match that grade to the, to the, to the ARC. A lot of work was done matching grades of the Central Park with the museum, and that's been addressed. And this does not affect that.
Okay, it's not going to be like this slope down?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And on, Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Devine.
And on that same location, on the project location map, Exhibit 1, you have a Sister City Garden Walk. Is that a part of the plan that is involved in this particular item?
Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, Councilmember Devine, that is a, per our previous conversations, how many years ago, that's a placeholder for a concept, concept for a Sister City Walk in that vicinity.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, if there is, if there is a Sister City Garden Walk, that there, the intention is to form a working group made up of representatives from the Sister Cities that would like to contribute, but the parameters of such a group has not been decided. Okay. Thank you.
I would, I would second that suggestion. If there is efforts to. If there is efforts to establish a sister-city walk, I think that would be a good idea to have those sister-city groups. In fact, we just established a new sister-city with Mardoni Artach for anyone who's a representative or wishes to contribute to be involved in what goes there. Any other comments?
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Lovely.
Second.
Great project.
All right. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Al-Sadrion.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is C. Public Works Regarding Professional Service Agreement for Mobile Payment Solutions to Pay by Phone. One motion awarding a professional service agreement to pay by phone, including a 30 cent per transaction convenience fee, and authorizing the city manager or is designate to execute the agreement.
All right. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Kusakian, Member of City Council. This is a service that many of our residents, including my own children, have asked for.
Indeed.
And you, Mayor, officially...
Two years in the making.
Requested, and this is in response to that request. Finally, we're in front of you. I'm going to invite Tad Dombrowski, our parking manager, to present the item. And we do have representative from Pay by Phone Company in case you have any questions for her.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski, the podium is yours.
Mayor Kusakian and councilmembers. The item before you tonight is a contract with Pay by Phone to provide a mobile payment solution to the city's parking meters. This solution will provide a contactless or touchless payment option as well as credit card payment options through the use of the customer's cellphone for all citywide parking meters, both which the public has increasingly asked for. Parking customers will be able to continue using the meters as they have in the past or will be able to use additional payment options that will be provided through Pay by Phone. At this time, I would like to have Teresa Trussell from Pay by Phone highlight a few of those options.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I walked around the downtown area today. You have a beautiful city. It's very walkable, feels very safe. So, I just wanted to tell you that it was a beautiful city. So, my overall goal is to just very quickly show you what the user experience would be like for your drivers with this mobile payment. So, this is kind of from the very beginning what they would see if they either don't have an account with us or if they are maybe signed out. So, when they are using their mobile device, you're seeing in the very top right corner what they're going to see to either sign in with an existing account or to sign in with their Apple account on their iPhone. So, they can sign in in less than 10 seconds with their Apple iPhone account and be paying for parking very, very quick. So, they go from having nothing to paying for parking in a very fast manner. They can also use Facebook, and they can continue without an account entirely as a guest. And they can also use all of these same features from the web. So, they can just go to paybyphone.com and pay everything without downloading the app at all. So, this is kind of a step-by-step. So, four total steps, easy as one, two, three, four, to pay for parking. And this is when you open the app example. You can see that on the very first phone, you would, by looking at the sign, be able to recognize what the location number is for the area that you're at. And you can either type that location number in or you can just select the nearby location that it suggests, which is what you see on the very first one under that text box. There's also the option for the map, which is suggested at the bottom to view the map. That is exactly the same thing as viewing a map as you would see on Google Maps. You're just looking at it from the standpoint of looking at a map and seeing where all the designated parking areas are that are available in the app. So, people can check out when they're in one area. They can check out another area to go park, see what time maybe payments are required. They can see what the payment options are for that area and kind of scope out what their options are before they head over there. And then, on the third phone, you can see the example of once they've started a session, it's going to confirm with them what the payment amount is, what their time for expiration is, and then, finally, their payment method. And then, last but not least, is after they've completed their transaction, they can see their transaction and the option to extend it if it's an area that permits extensions. So, Pay by Phone supports a wide variety of languages. We have 11 languages shown here. And one of the commitments that we have committed to Glendale is to develop the Armenian language within the first 12 months of the contract to support the vast culture that you have here. And whatever language they have their phone set up in is what the app is going to show up in. And that is also supported with our Siri and Amazon Alexa Auto integration so they can use voice commands to pay for parking instead of just using the app. So, they can say, hey, Siri, park me in location, such and such, for two hours. And then, last but not least, we are supported on the Apple Smartwatch. So, once somebody pays for parking, they can, you know, they put their phone away. They're hanging out, having coffee with a friend. They get the notification on their smartwatch that their parking's going to expire, and they can extend it right from their watch. They don't have to pull their phone out. That's a really loved feature just because if their phone's put away, they still get that notification to go ahead and extend their parking. And then, of course, all of those features are part of our partnerships that we have with Apple, Amazon Alexa, and Android, of course. And we are owned by Volkswagen. And that's it. Pretty short. I'm going to turn it back over to Tad.
And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you. And I'm very, very grateful that you brought this back. I know you probably got tired of me asking you. Every time I saw you on the City Hall campus, Tad wins, it's coming back, wins, it's coming back. I appreciate it. Will there be the ability to add Korean and possibly Tagalog to the languages as well? I mean, I know that Glendale has a very niche, specific need for Armenian, but I would think that Korean and Tagalog in Los Angeles are more broadly spoken languages as well.
Absolutely. We're always developing...
Podium, please. To the podium, please.
We're always developing the languages that we support. That's why our list is so vast. So, that's definitely something that we can continue to discuss.
Okay. All right, well, I think that would be a good addition to do those as well as you're working on that, not just for Glendale, but, like I said, throughout LA County. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Just very excited.
Sorry. Councilmember Brotman, and then Councilmember Najarian.
First of all, yeah, I think this is exciting. This is something we've all been waiting for. Just a question on the extension, you know, extending your time because that's a great feature to have. I love it. I know we have a few locations now in the city where we can do that, but not many. What percentage of our meters will be able to support that currently?
Councilmember Brotman, the extend-by-phone that we have currently is tied in with the digital parking meters and is not offered in the coin-only meters. This will allow us to be able to use that same extend-by-phone... A similar extend-by-phone is what we have now and transfer that over to all citywide meters.
So, any meter that I'm at, anywhere in the city, if I'm using this system, I can do... It'll notify me somehow, right? Either through a text or... And then, I can do an extension.
Correct. You'll get a reminder through the app for when your parking is expiring, and you will be able to extend it up to the maximum time limit. So, if you parked in a two-hour zone, you paid for an hour, you would be able to extend it for up to another hour.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thanks.
All right. And Councilmember Najarian.
So, some cities, I guess like Pat and I, I keep sort of going back to Pasadena because that's the one I'm most familiar with. When they have this pay-by-phone, they don't even have the coin around the courthouse, let's say. They don't even have the pay-by-coin option. It's just a space similar to what we have on Bram Boulevard. Is it our intention eventually to remove all the coin-operated? Or is that something we want to keep and supplement it with the pay-by-phone? I guess there'd be an identifying number on that meter or the space that you would enter into the pay-by-phone or you'd go and put a coin in. Is that... So, what's the deal with that?
Correct. Councilman Najarian, it's... What it is, if you use it, it can be by zone, and we still haven't set all of this up. But it can be by zone or by meter number, and we'll look at the logistics of exactly how that works. But the goal is... A lot of other cities are looking at exploring and seeing whether or not they can do this with just a sign. Do we need a meter anymore? I think that's steps ahead and miles ahead from where we are today. I think there's a lot of customers that still request the meter. But if we... If our meter collection folks noticed a certain zone that is, you know, they collected the coins this week, and there were no coins, then I think we can start exploring that option. But I think we're going to wait until we get to that point before we start going down that road. This is really just a way for our customers to be able to pay with credit cards in places where they couldn't before.
Who gets the 30 cent convenience fee?
That is the company Pay by Phone. That is their fee.
Okay. In addition to the 80,000... Was there an $80,000?
Correct. The $80,000 in the contract is really for us to put signage in our lots, for us to market the program. Those are all costs that...
Those are our costs.
Yeah.
So, they get paid with the 30 cent?
Correct. Their fees are based on the 30 cent fee.
I would say that I think that's important for us, at least for the time being, to maintain the coin-operated meters. In addition to this, just because there are folks who, you know, this is predicated on a person's... Having a person having a smartphone. I know that smartphones are prevalent. I think everyone probably up here on the dais and maybe everyone in the audience has a smartphone. But that's not necessarily the case for all people. I know some people who are actually going back to having flip phones because they don't want all the distractions of smartphones. So, I think it would be good to have it, to give everyone the options, just like when we do outreach and not everyone is on Instagram or on Facebook or on Twitter. So, different strokes for different folks.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Brotman, and then Councilmember Al-Sadrion.
Okay. So, the existing physical meters that we have, those don't change, right? This is just a system that kind of runs on top of all that.
Correct.
So, some of our meters take... A lot of our meters take a credit card. So, you could still do that. You could still just physically use a credit card or the coins. Okay. And that'll stay. So, that... I think that's helpful.
Except like in Montrose, where you don't have those credit card-operated meters. It would be either this system or coins.
Or coins.
Correct.
Yeah. So, all right. Councilmember Al-Sadrion.
The app, if... When you are parking at a certain spot, does it show that that spot is paid for for, let's say, another 45 minutes? I've always had this issue with the spots that we have now. So, I'm just wondering how the app calculates.
Councilmember Al-Sadrion, it will show on your phone if you've paid.
But it won't show on somebody else's phone that...
Somebody else's, correct.
You know?
I know.
So, thank you very much. With that, who'd like to make a motion and take us into the 21st century?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Brotman, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Al-Sadrion.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Yes. Thank you very much. What is the next item?
Public Works Regarding Creative Crosswalk Update. One motion to note and file creative crosswalk design updates for capital improvement projects.
All right. Mr. Galanian.
Mr. Mayor Kusakian, Member of City Council. This is another one of those projects and items that we say, finally, it's here. And it's exciting to see it to be presented to you. Sarkis Organesian, our Deputy Director of Public Works, live city engineer, will make the presentation for these creative crosswalks at three intersections. Mr. Organesian.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Kusakian, members of City Council. Good evening. Here to talk about an item that is related to pedestrian safety and creative crosswalks that was also requested by City Council, completed by both the Public Works Department and the Library Arts and Culture Department. So we released an RFP for creative crosswalks at three project locations, three specific projects, one at Adams Street and Palmer Avenue, another at Broadway and Columbus, and another at Broadway and Galleria Way. As a result of the RFP, we received 54 proposals. There was a Artist Review and Selection Committee comprised of one Arts and Culture Commissioner, two Public Works staff representatives, and four Library Arts and Culture staff representatives. As part of that review, for the first project, Adams Street and Palmer Avenue, located in the Adams Hill neighborhood, we selected Where We Meet by Keith and Company, and as you can see on the screen, is a colorful crosswalk. Here is an aerial view of that crosswalk. Here is a rendering of what that crosswalk will most likely look like in the field. And here is another aerial view of the additional painted bump outs that we will be completing as part of this pilot project. The whole goal of this project is to tighten the intersection to improve safety for all modes of travel, particularly the pedestrians that use this critical juncture in the Adams Hill neighborhood. The second project, or the second and third project are actually related to a public works capital improvement project that is currently ongoing and in the construction phase, located on Broadway. The first intersection as part of that project is on Broadway and Columbus. As part of our Artist Selection Committee, we selected the chemical stain by a company called Aplab. As you can see on that screen, this is a high-visibility crosswalk complemented with the pattern shown there. As part of the same construction project and a, and the third project as part of the creative crosswalk proposal, at Broadway and Galleria Way, we selected the fish scales by Aplab. And as you can see again, this is a 12-inch wide crosswalk painted on the outside lines, followed by the fish scales that will be infilled into the crosswalk area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, who would like to chime in? We have one card from the public, do we have any callers on this?
Mayor, we do not have callers on this item.
All right, anyone? All right, let's hear from the public first, Stephen Meek, from our Parks Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. I'm actually here as President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association this evening. We are definitely in favor of all of these projects, and I just wanted to thank the Council, Gazden, and the staff for meeting with the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association several times, going over different ideas for these, especially the Palmer and Adams thing, and it was very good to see how well the city is working with the neighborhood in coming up with these ideas, and I just wanted to thank you all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
First a comment, I just want to thank staff for a good example of collaboration. I like how, you know, Public Works, Library Arts and Culture, Arts and Culture Commission also went over this, was there anybody else that I missed, or was it those three? I don't know if any other commissions looked at it, but anyway, I think it's a nice example of all the pieces working together and coming out with a good product, so I wanted to say that. The question I have is, as far as maintenance goes, like, right now, you know, you showed them, they look kind of nice and bright and eye-catching, like, how long is this going to hold up, how are we going to keep these colors from getting muted, you know, over time with all the wear and tear that they're going to get?
Councilmember Brotman, the specification for the paint that's used for these types of crosswalks is actually a very high-quality, high-durable, traffic-rated paint. As you can see, we did do a similar pilot project located at three locations throughout Glendale, one of them being right near City Hall. That was done actually about a year ago in the month of December. It's held up relatively well with very minimal maintenance. They're supposed to be pop-up style crosswalks that go up, and they have an average lifespan of one to two years. Again, the three crosswalk locations have held up pretty well, and with the new specification of the better quality paint that we're going to be installing as part of these projects, we hope that it will last a lot longer than, than one to two years.
Okay, so what's our, what's our longer-term plan? So three, four years from now, they're going to look kind of worn and muted, and what are we going to, what's our plan? We're going to repaint them, or are we going to come up with a new design, or what?
Depending on how they hold up, we would budget to maintain them through our yearly budget cycle, depending on if we can do that in-house, or if we would have to hire, again, contractors as part of capital projects to be able to maintain those crosswalks.
Okay, so we should expect after two years, three years, we're going to be, we're going to be having to go back and kind of redo these? That's what you're saying?
The goal would be a little bit longer, but yes, hopefully.
Okay, and then, I guess the last thing is just, you know, I know that we have these, these examples that you've shown us, and I asked you during the briefing, do we have any others in the pipeline, and we don't right now, but I would hope that anytime we, we are doing any work on a street, re-striping or repaving or anything like that, we take the opportunity to put in either, you know, these, what are called high-visibility crosswalks, or, you know, if it's, if it's an intersection where it's appropriate to put in a creative crosswalk, we do that. But I just want to make sure that we do one or the other every time, you know, we have that opportunity and not kind of pass that up, and I know that's happened recently, so I just want to make sure that, you know, it's clear that, you know, at least from my point of view, I'm hoping that we do that.
Councilmember Devine.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Isn't, you know, the one out here, the crosswalks on Broadway are really, they look very bad. Isn't there some kind of a sealant that they can put over the paint, or that would help it withstand? I don't, can't see these lasting three years. How long have these been here on Broadway?
They've been here for almost a year, actually.
And they're practically gone. I mean, they, it looks, doesn't look good, they don't look good, they don't, they don't have any kind of visual impact that I see. Of course, could have to do a lot with the colors, they were kind of, kind of dull. Is this going to be high gloss, is it going to be dull? What kind of finish is going to be on this paint that you're, they're using, do you know?
It's more of a matte finish, it's a traffic-rated finish, a high gloss finish would make the paint too slippery.
Slippery.
So it's more of a matte finish. The crosswalks that you mentioned, Councilmember Devine, they were a pilot project as part of a CECLAVIA funding that we had, that we had to spend rather quickly, so we had to go through that iteration to see what we learned, kind of a best practice, and then apply it to these future projects.
Right, but you said we're using the same-
No, we're using a better quality, a higher-quality paint.
Okay, so you are, that's, okay, that's good. I just want to say that I was underwhelmed with the Where We Meet, the one on Adams, but I'm glad that they like it, that's what's important, and it does look better in color than it did in the black and white report that we got, so I'm glad that we're finally doing this, because this was a, a goal I think that this council had, has had for a while, so thank you, thanks very much.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll make my comments known. So I agree with the comments about the design outside the City Hall, corner of Glendale and Broadway, where it was, the color palette was underwhelming, the design I felt was underwhelming, and then I appreciate that we went out to try and solicit some more creative input and got commissions and boards involved, and I'll say that some of it, I think, is okay, and some of it still falls short, because I don't believe that any of these really tell stories of place and the people that make up this community. And I want to explain what I mean, it's not, the colors are part of it, but I think it's also how we approach this, and I want to show a couple of things that I, I don't know if the, our clerk staff has, has been able to put it up, but it was on the fly, I was just trying to text them some of the images that we have. So this is a park in downtown Yerevan, one of their newest parks, and they've taken inlaid bricks, and I know this will be expensive, this is not necessarily, I'm not suggesting that we do, I understand I have to be very specific with what I say, because staff can sometimes take it a little too literally. This would be fine if we were doing it on Artsakh Street, but the idea behind it, which is, and if we can go to another slide, is fine. This is, I think, I believe in our local Chinatown in Los Angeles, just two colors on a crosswalk tells more of a story and makes more of a creative and artistic impact than just the regular white stripes. And it doesn't take a lot to do something creative, let's go to the next one. This is again, I believe in Yerevan, and, but you can, it's a little zoomed in, but you can see that it's got the Oriental or Armenian rug motifs. I think there's, was that all that I was able to send? Oh, and this is also in Chinatown, one color with the Asian dragon motif for a crosswalk that does a lot more to enhance a regular crosswalk than just the plain white stripes, right? And so this is an aerial view of that park in downtown Yerevan, and it's an absolutely breathtaking tapestry, it's literally, you can just sit and marvel at it, and I think if we were even using colors to do more creative designs, even the colors that we have outside of City Hall, if they were done in this type of design, I think it would make more of an impact than what we have. And it's hard for me to believe that in this city, in this community, when we ask for things for the Arts and Culture Commission, for staff to go out and look for something, the best we get is chemical stain. I mean, the name itself is a little off-putting, and fish scales, which I don't know what the connection is to the Galleria, or to one of our major, you know, merchant centers, mercantile centers in the city. I mean, like I said, it's better than what we have, but it could have been something outstanding, and I think that we fell slightly short of the goal, because either of not having time, not having the willingness, not doing enough to see what else is out there. And again, all, we don't have to go very far, you can go to Chinatown here locally and see what is available, and we could do the same thing here in Glendale with not much effort. So those are my thoughts on it, I don't know if staff wants to comment.
Mayor Kusakian, Member City Council, those are valid points, and this is not the last effort at installing these creative sidewalks, crosswalks throughout the city, so in consideration of the comments that you had made, we can certainly make those criterion as part of the selection process for the future intersections as they come along.
And again, I just want to urge staff that to not just be satisfied and say, okay, well, we advertised, and then these were the only people that applied, so we have to pick from this. You know, be relentless in your pursuit for greatness and for things that reflect the diversity of this community. We have a very unique community that is not very, you know, broad, I mean, you're talking about a community that's about 38% Armenian, that comes from all over the planet, all countries from all over the globe, and, you know, they don't have the numbers that other communities do, where you'll be able to easily Google and find things that'll be reflective of this, but there are options and things available to us. I mean, this is, this park in Yerevan is absolutely gorgeous, and it's something that I think that if Yerevan can do it, we can certainly do it here in Glendale. Yes, Councilmember Najarian.
So, I'm not sure I'm thinking about this the right way. I mean, to me, I think the primary reason that we're doing this in crosswalks is to draw extra attention and to prevent collisions, to keep the pedestrian aware that this is the crossing space, and the drivers aware as well. And I don't think that necessarily is congruent with a beautiful design like we're seeing here. I mean, what, what are we doing here? If we wanted a crosswalk to be as visible as possible, perhaps we'd be doing it with day-glow colors, with neon colors, where it's like bright and nobody misses it. However, if our point is to bring art into the city, then forget the, even the white, the zebra lines, do something like this in the crosswalk. So where are we going, what are, and aside from where do we want to go, what are our obligations under the vehicle code, under the state transportation, what's it called? Yeah, right. In doing that, because I think, you know, I think we're, there's two different goals that we could be striving for, and maybe they don't intersect, maybe it's, you know, they're exclusive of each other.
Councilmember Devine.
I think Councilmember Najarian, what we're trying to do is find a balance between art and safety, and I, my issue is that I did not feel that, I was underwhelmed with, by these, because I didn't feel that they were art, and they could be very, you know, instrumental in, you know, advancing safety, but to me, they didn't display the art that I was looking for, and I think that's kind of what the mayor is looking at, he's looking for safety, but he's also looking for that art component. Now, we could be way off-base, maybe this is fine art, I don't know, I'm just saying that I was, when I saw the stripes, I thought this looks like the zebra crosswalks, but then you, somebody threw in a couple of teal colors and a, looked like a maroon color, and called it art, and all of these, the Arts and Culture Commission, the Library Arts and Culture, and, and all the, those that were judging, did you say there were 54 submissions?
Correct, yes.
54 submissions, and this is, this is, I, it just boggles my, I don't know, I, you know, it's, I know it's subjective, but I think we have to look at it at this point, that it's a starting point, it's the first that we're, or this, actually the second, third that we're trying, but I just think that the selection has to be better, I, and I don't know how to, how to do that, I don't know if the city manager is on the right path, that, you know, we have to instill in the panel, those that are selecting, what the criteria is, that this is, or, you know, should you bring these, you know, these, this artwork to us and say, okay, what do you think? Maybe we should be in on the, on the selection, I don't know what the answer is.
Mayor Kusakian, Member City Council, if I may, an alternative is, although staff's recommending approval of those, these designs for the three intersections, alternatively, we can reject the designs, and staff will have to go back and reissue an RFP with some kind of criteria that reflects council's desire, as far as reflected, the designs being reflective of the community, more, more of an arts element into the design, and I'm not an artist, I don't have an eye for an art either, but like Councilmember Najarian mentioned, we also have to keep enhancing, enhancing the safety of the pedestrians in the forefront. I am going to ask Ms. Fokutomi Jones, because I see that there is a mention of a grant funding perhaps that may be jeopardized if we delay this project, can you clarify that?
I don't believe there's grant funding. Mayor Kusakian, Members of City Council, City staff, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this project, we're very excited about it. To your point, we did do an exhaustive outreach for this particular proposal, we posted it on Arts for LA, publicartists.org, Coda Works Artists, several places, so the RFP was released in several locations and several artists applied to it. To have 54 proposals for this particular process is a lot, and very extensively, we thoroughly went through all the proposals. One of the difficulties, and as you mentioned, Councilmember Devine, of trying to accommodate public safety and the intricacy of the designs, is that we did receive a lot of proposals that were incredibly intricate, somewhat similar to the textile images that Councilmember Mayor Kusakian did include. One of the issues that we're having, the difficulty, is that the actual installation of the artwork would need to be done by a painting contractor, not the particular artist. So we, the artists would need to provide stencils in the design, including the design maintenance of it, so that's where we get into a little bit of a, how do we maintain it, how do we install it accurately? It would be an extensive process to have the contractors work with the painting company, and it would be in a very extensive process to have the intricacies of those particular designs developed into the, and embedded into the streets, so that's one of the maintenance concerns that the committee had with these intricate designs that we did receive.
Well, if I may, it's not my objective to postpone this project in any way, shape, or form, I think we should go forward with it. You know, the proof will be in the pudding, what it looks like on the, on the, on the ground, on the, in the crosswalk, so, you know, let's learn from this, change the process, change the understanding, and hopefully the next projects that we do will be, will have a different attitude towards them, but I think we should move forward with these. I don't want to delay, 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 I don't want to do that, I think that a lot of people are excited about this, and we should learn from it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there's no other comments or questions? Motion, second.
Approved.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Mr. Mayor, let's, you know, there's no shortage of crosswalks, and paint isn't that expensive, let's just try everything, I mean, let's be very broad in our attempts.
I got to tell you, I've sat up here and for the last few weeks, I've made a lot of personal compromises on a lot of issues, and gone along just to get along with everyone, but on this one, I think, you know, it's time for me to start, you know, voting my conscience, and I'm not going to necessarily approve this, even though I know that, you know, it's been approved by my colleagues, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on this, I think we can do better.
No, come on, next round, I mean, we've got so many of these, let's let the next one be a designed after your-
You know, let my no vote be a message to staff that they need to try better, and they need to do better, so, next item, please, thank you.
Next item would be Item E, Management Services, regarding appointment of one City of Glendale member to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission. One motion appointing one individual to the vacant seat as Glendale member of the Airport Authority Commission for the remainder of the unexpired term through May 31, 2025. Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Sure, let's turn to staff first, and then we'll go to the caller.
Thank you, Mayor Kusakian, Member City Council. This item in front of you this evening is to request consideration of appointing one individual to the unexpired term, which runs through May 31, 2025, to serve as a member representing the City of Glendale on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission. You can either appoint an elected or non-elected official to fill the vacancy. Former Mayor Frank Cantaro and former Chief of Police Carl Pavelitis were nominated at your September 20th City Council meeting, however, since then, Chief Pavelitis has withdrawn his name from consideration. So either you can close nominations this evening and appoint Mr. Cantaro to serve as the member on the commission, or accept more nominations and vote on the additional nomination as you see fit.
We-
Mayor, before you-
Go ahead.
-do the call, you know, I have, I've had time to think about this, and I was hoping that our discussion on this issue would have been different during the last time, but I was interested, I am interested to serve on this Burbank Airport Authority. As our city manager had noted, there is no non-elected member that serves on any board or commission, and I feel like I owe it to every Glendalian that voted for me to bring this into a transparent matter, and so I'm not sure where my, all my colleagues stands on this, but I wanted to vocalize myself, my interest.
Thank you, Councilmember Asatrian, and let's go to the caller, and then we can have some discussion.
Dr. Katie Clark, you're live, Dr. Katie Clark, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on this important appointment. My name is Dr. Katie Clark, and I'm the current Chair of the National Women's Political Caucus for the Greater Pasadena Area, so we serve Glendale, La Cañada, Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre. Although certainly Mr. Cantaro has a long record of service, I would strongly urge the Council to pursue the nomination and appointment of Councilmember Asatrian to this role. Councilmember Asatrian's predecessor held the appointment previously, so in the first place, I think there's a reasonable argument to be made that the unexpired term ought to remain with the seat until it's expiry in May of 2025. Additionally, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned at the council meeting on September 20th, previous practice of this body would lead us to believe that a member of council be appointed to this joint powers administration rather than an outside, non-elected individual, and certainly that's a practice shared by other communities with the majority of commissioners, also members of their respective city councils. And just one final note, if you'll allow, a small point of information, I think Councilmember Asatrian sort of referred to this- I think Councilmember Rosatryan sort of referred to this earlier, but at the September 20th meeting, while I did hear Councilmember Rosatryan ask an informational question about non-elected officials serving on similar regional bodies, she was not in fact nominated, nor did she decline to serve. And with the greatest possible respect, Mr. Mayor, the assertion that Councilmember Rosatryan was not interested in serving was made by you, sir, not by the council member herself. Therefore, I'd request that you formally nominate Councilmember Rosatryan, either appoint her to the commission this evening, or permit her the first right of refusal, as is traditional. Thank you so much for hearing me, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you on this matter.
All right. Any other calls or comments?
Well, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't know if there were, the caller is from the National Organization of Women, or National Women's...
National Political Women's Caucus.
So, I don't, I mean, this whole thing is kind of getting blown out of proportion. In fact, I had expressed a desire to be on the Airport Commission, and Mr. Quintero at a particular time, perhaps 2018, was appointed, he was not elected, and he was appointed in my, instead of me. So, it's not like there's a, a practice out there, there's not a tradition where if an elected wants to be in, that they have the, the green light. I think Councilmember, former Mayor Garpetian was around when that happened, and I think Mr. Sananian too. Now, I remember, remember, I said, I want to be on it, and it was like...
Governor Garpetian is shaking his head.
It was like, it was like crickets. But that's okay. I mean, the point, the point I'm making is that it's not always, you know, the entitlement of a sitting elected council member. Furthermore, being on the, being on the Airport Authority, I think it is really at a critical moment in its progress to obtain the approval, both legally and architecturally, and from the community, for the approval and construction of the replacement passenger terminal. There's some heavy stuff going on there. Mr. Quintero has been on the commission, had been on the commission, served perhaps five, six years, perhaps even longer. I think he's gonna be the best person to come in and pick up and help represent the residents of Glendale in the best interests. And I wish I had known, am I being recorded, Malcolm? I wish I had known that, straighten my tie here, I wish I had known that Ms. Rosatryan had expressed a desire, because we had gone through this process. It was Pavolitis, Quintero, Pavolitis, Quintero, until Pavolitis dropped out. Until perhaps just recently, I had no idea that you had expressed an interest, so it's kind of late in the game.
Councilmember Najarian actually had an opportunity to only speak to one person prior to a meeting. Because of the Brown Act violation, I communicated that desire to that one member prior to the last meeting. I communicated it to one member prior to this meeting. I've communicated it to our city manager. So, the process is not closed. If we're talking about experience, I may be new to the council, but I'm not new. You know, I, this is nothing towards former Mayor Frank Quintero, who, you know, gosh, I think I was 19 years old when I first met him, when he was in these chambers. I've been in and out of Glendale politics, and I have the experience in serving on regional bodies. Not that that has been a requirement for this council or previous council. And I did not know that, it's not just a matter of what the practice has been. There's not a single non-elected member now. Each of you have seats on these different commissions and boards, and I would like to, the opportunity to do the same.
Well, we're talking about the airport in particular.
Who would like to comment on this? Because I certainly can share my thoughts, but go ahead.
This was Councilmember Brotman's nomination. It would have been approved weeks before this all occurred. So I would say that we close the nominations and let Councilmember Brotman's nomination be heard.
Sure. Let me, let me simply say, Councilmember Brotman, did you want to comment?
I'll make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just, I mean, because I know this is kind of uncomfortable for all of us, but I nominated Frank Quintero. Originally, actually, I thought that would be something I'd like to do. I actually thought of, of speaking to one of you to get, one of you to nominate me. But then I talked to Frank, and given, you know, I learned about what's going on right now with the, with the new terminal, and I thought, you know, he's better. He's more experienced, and he can do a better job than me. So that's why I kind of never spoke to any of you to say it was something I wanted to do. I went ahead and, and suggested, you know, I said to him, well, you know, round up, round up your support, but I'm, I'm, I think you'd be really good. I also talked to Chief Pavolitis at the time, and he sounded kind of like, oh, I'll do it if you need me to, but he didn't sound really eager. So that's the background. So at this point, given what's going on, I personally still think Frank is the right person, for at least the balance of this term, which is like two years, and we can, you know, reconsider it when it comes to the next full, full term. So that's where I am.
Mayor, I do have a caller on the line for this item.
Sure. Go ahead. Three minutes.
Hans Johnson, you have three minutes.
Hi, Glendale Council. This is Hans Johnson, President of the East Area Progressive Democrats, and it's an honor to be able to speak to this question involving the Airport Authority appointment. I appreciate the comments made by council members, and I also want to underscore the clear interest of an existing council member in filling the vacancy. As East Area Progressive Democrats made known to the council in our correspondence two weeks ago and shared again with council members today, this has been an appointment that was filled by a former council member. And now, with all pertinence of no interest by an existing council member in Alanis Satrian being made manifest to the council, it is wholly appropriate to consider that council member's interest in this position in filling the seat vacated by a former council member. As we pointed out in our correspondence with the council, this body needs gender parity. It lacks gender parity in its representation, and it has eight existing members, only one member under the age of 50, and needs representation from people with a clear sphere of reference and a proven commitment to taking seriously and reflecting in the decisions of the authority the scope of interested stakeholders beyond Glendale city limits, as I think Councilmember Rosatryan has proven. And for all of those specific, as well as representational concerns, there is a very talented member ready to serve in that post. And I would urge the council to take seriously what message it sends to spurring the interest of an existing younger woman council member to serve in that role, and to, with no offense to former council member Quintero, someone I know and respect profoundly, but to seek out this appointment for someone who could bring both those specific and representational qualities to the Airport Authority. As someone who worked on the campaign to secure resources for the upgrade of this airport six years ago, and our club members whose interests as Glendale residents and as stakeholders in the airport and users of that facility far beyond the boundaries of Glendale, we look at this appointment as an opportunity to show respect for the specific expertise and the representational concerns voiced in our letter, and having the opportunity to reiterate that tonight before you. I really hope you think about this opportunity, and hope that this is an opportunity to show that an existing council member can fill both the specific expertise and the representational interests that we have voiced. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Did he actually use age discrimination in his argument?
Um, I don't...
Did he actually say, nobody's under 51, everybody's too old, and we need someone young? Did he actually say that?
Yes, he did.
So, I, let me just, you know, this is, I think, kind of become a greater issue than it needed to be. Allow me to explain where I'm coming from, and I appreciate Councilmember Rosatryan's desire to serve, desire to serve the city, to serve our residents. And I wish this had, kind of played out differently, but I don't think it would have necessarily changed my opinion, because it's been my desire at one time. When I first became familiar with the city, became involved, got elected as clerk, there was a lay citizen that was a member of the Airport Commission in addition to the council members who were sitting there. And at the time, there was this concern, and there's always this concern, and we're having these meetings with, with various community members about what's gonna happen with the Shoal landfill, that no three people, in fact, anyone who goes to the town hall this week will not see any three of us there at one time because of Brown Act concerns. It was, there was, I believe, research done, I don't know if it was Mr. Garcia or his predecessor, Mr. Scott Howard, very capable, very knowledgeable, a remarkable city attorney who I think may have done research and determined that the addition of a third council member does not necessarily constitute a violation of the Brown Act on that body, but it's not something that necessarily, just because it is right but doesn't seem right, doesn't mean we necessarily need to do it. Or if it's legal but it doesn't seem right, or pass the smell test, it needs to happen. Therefore, you know, I've more or less advocated that we de-politicize these commission and board appointment processes as much as possible. We have enough on our plates as council members. I can tell you how difficult it is for me to try and be at everything all the time and be present for our residents. I try to make my best effort. People here in the audience know that, others know that, that we may not always agree fully on everything, but I try to be at as many things as possible to allow folks to be heard. That alone takes up more time than the complicated, specific expertise issues, as one of our callers said, require for us to then divert our attentions and do deep dives into the various policy areas. And we have had staff serve on boards and commissions in roles that were claimed by council members before, but I believe were better served by staff members, including the vector control, where we had actually a member of the city staff serve on it, and then a council member, and now it's vacant. We had one other body, city, yeah, on Metropolitan Water District, on the Airport Commission, and the reason Chief Pavolitis was thrown into the mix was because he had experience being the city's representative while he was, I believe, a police lieutenant to serve on that. And there was one more, I think.
Mayor Kasakian, I believe it's called a, it's a working committee, North Verdugo Drainage Basin.
Yeah, we have someone, Mr. Mike Nigato. So, you know, I think that having two council members and a layperson, which Councilmember Quintero is at the time, or Chief Pavolitis would have been, would have been my preference, and she'll, should any of my colleagues who are currently not serving on it, knowing that Councilmember Rosatryan is interested in it, I think she would be, well, now I know that Councilmember Brotman is also interested in it, so that puts us in a pickle, but one of the two would certainly have my support to succeed my current colleagues who are serving on it. But that is where I stand on this issue. And it is by being transparent, it is by empowering the residents, it is by giving a voice to someone other than the person who has the bully pulpit of the council dais to be able to have the city best served. We have two nominations. We have the nomination of, well, we had three. One person, Chief, former Chief Pavolitis has withdrawn, is that correct, his nomination. So the only nominations remaining are that of council, former council member Frank Quintero, and Councilmember Rosatryan, who has expressed her desire to serve. So we can do this by taking them in order. We can have a roll call on Councilmember Quintero's nomination, and if that does not pass, then we can have a vote on Councilmember Rosatryan's nomination.
Actually, there was no nomination for me. I did...
Oh, you did not nominate yourself?
I, it requires a second in order for it to go to a vote.
No, nomination does not...
Doesn't. I was gonna say, procedurally, there wasn't a nomination for Councilmember Rosatryan, so she or anybody else on the dais can nominate her. And then I would note, when there are more than, when there's more than one nominee to a board of commission or any appointment, the process is to take roll call by each board, each council member naming, expressing their preference.
That's, that's, that's an option, a way to do it, and we've done it that way before. But in terms of nomination, so, Councilmember Rosatryan, you're saying you are not nominating yourself?
You know, I'm, I'm nominating myself.
I thought that I had mentioned, I had said that the nominations were closed and that we would vote on Councilmember...
You attempted to close nominations.
Didn't you ask, didn't you say that that was one of the...
If I may, nominations are not closed until the mayor's had the opportunity to ask if, if all, any other nominations.
So, and we've had, at least, in my recollection, we've had a council member nominate themselves for something before.
That's correct. That's correct. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just procedurally...
Well, I had someone else in mind, that's someone who was here this evening, but yeah.
Procedurally, I apologize. We've had this issue with the, with the selection of the mayor in the past. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, the preferred method for selecting, when there's multiples, to have each council member name their preferred candidate when the vote comes.
Okay, that's fine. In that case, we can do it in that manner? Again, this is democracy in action, folks. So let's have a roll call on the appointment to the airport, sorry. We close nominations, and we will have a roll call with each member of the council stating their preference. And before we do that, was it, is this to complete the unfinished term?
Correct.
Okay, so, so for a, for a two-year period?
Till May 21, 2025.
This is for, until May 21, 2025?
May 31, 2025.
End of May. May 31, 2025, just need to be clear.
Glenn's correct.
Okay. All right. With that, let us have a roll call.
Councilmember Rosatryan?
You named the name of the person you...
Rosatryan.
Councilmember Brotman?
With respect to my colleague, I nominate, or I...
Vote for.
Vote for Frank Quintero.
Councilmember Devine?
Quintero.
Councilmember Najarian?
Quintero.
Mayor Kasakian?
Again, with no disrespect to Councilmember Rosatryan, I will cast my vote for Councilmember Quintero to complete the term from May 31, 20, until May 31, 2025. All right, thank you very much, and let's move on to the next item.
Next item is Management Services regarding development of plastic waste reduction regulations. One motion providing direction to staff on elements to be included in plastic waste reduction regulations prohibiting the use, distribution, and sale of polyethylene foodware, polyethylene coolers, polyethylene packaging materials, polyethylene egg carons, polyethylene produce trays, meat and fish trays, single-use plastic straws, stirrers, and utensils, disposable cup chart, disposable cup charges, and reusable foodwares for dining on premises.
All right. Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Kasakian, member of City Council, we have been before you regarding this item in the past. It's staff's intention to confirm that the direction you provided is fully captured by staff moving forward, as well as some phasing opportunities when we roll out this, this set of regulation, and an outreach effort that Mr. David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, will cover in more detail.
All right. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, and members of the City Council. As mentioned by the city manager, have been in front of council before on this item, and there has been some changes regarding phasing to potentially implement this ordinance that we think will lead to the more successful implementation of this ordinance. So I'm going to review those changes and review the outline of what we think should be included in the ordinance to get final direction from City Council.
Any questions? So far? No? All right. And, go on.
Should I go through the presentation?
No, no, please, go ahead. I was just wondering if we should start now or wait for Councilmember Devine, but go ahead.
So what are we, what are we looking at tonight? So what are we discussing? Discussing... We're discussing the plastic waste regulations, and there's six items or six elements to these regulations which we want to discuss. So the first is the prohibition of polystyrene products, and we, products. We've made some changes there to what originally came in front of council with. So also the prohibition of single-use plastics, there's been no changes there to what originally came in front of council with. The establishment of disposable foodware standards, this is something new that we didn't come to council with originally, but we think is necessary to come back to council with. The implementation of a disposable cup charge, which is something new. The use of reusable foodware for dining on premises, there hasn't really been any changes there. And the prohibition of any non-carbonated, unflavored drinking water in single-use plastic bottles. So I'll review these six elements fairly quickly. So the first element is to institute a ban on the sale and distribution and use of certain polystyrene products. Polystyrene products are really hard to recover in the recycling system, and there's no real recycling program for them, hence why these polystyrene products are selected. So what we recommend is that no food or beverage provider shall distribute, sell any polystyrene foodware in conjunction with the sale of prepared food, raw food, or beverages at any location within the city. That no, that no person shall sell any polystyrene foodware, polystyrene cooler at any location within the city. No vendor in the city shall sell, distribute, or use polystyrene packing material, including but limited to foam peanuts, packing peanuts, foam popcorn, and packing noodles. No person may sell or offer for sale, otherwise distribute for compensation within the city, any meat, or fish, or produce chase, or egg cartons made from polystyrene. And that providers who do distribute prepared food, or raw food, or beverages in disposable foodware accessories shall only dispose, only distribute disposables that exhibit a resin code other than the number six. The number six is the resin code for polystyrene products. Resin codes one through, one through five, and seven are for other plastic products. And I'll come back to this in a minute. So our intention is that going forward with an ordinance, if an ordinance is adopted, that this polystyrene ban take effect immediately.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just to clarify, I think you just said it, but I might have missed it. So if you just go back, you're saying all these things you're showing are six?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so you're gonna talk about the other ones then?
I am.
Okay.
We also recommend that this, we came to City Council this originally, that the use of single-use plastic straws, stirrers, and utensils for use on site to go or deliberately are prohibited, because there's many alternatives which can be used, such as straw, paper, plastics, edibles, and everything, and wood. So this is a new area, as Mr. Councilmember Brotman mentioned, plastics one through five and seven. We'll initially allow those potentially during the first year of the ordinance, but after that first year, we want to begin to eliminate those. So to do that, we need to establish foodware standards. So staff recommend that within 12 months of adoption of an ordinance, that disposable foodware standards be established for single-use products for serving, consuming, prepared food, raw food, or beverages. Where disposable foodware and disposable foodware accessories are of materials that are accepted by the city's recycling collection programs and compost collection programs. That those disposable foodware and disposable foodware accessories are free of all intentionally added fluorinated chemicals, as certified by the BPI Institute or other independent third-party certified organization. And that the city shall maintain a list of suppliers that offer these disposable foodware and disposable foodware accessories to allow the effective establishments to be able to purchase them and use them. City Council also recommended that we look at a disposable cup charge. A disposable cup charge would be considered, which would, for example, require food and beverage providers to charge 25 cents for disposable cups. The 25 cent fee will be retained by the businesses, similar to the plastic bag fee that you get when you go to a supermarket. And the 25 cent fee retained by the businesses would enable them to comply with the aforementioned disposable foodware standards. So far, we are aware of over four Californian cities that have implemented such a disposable cup charge. Additionally, at the discretion of the business, the customers can avoid the charge by bringing their own cups.
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian?
So who gets the extra money?
That goes back to the business.
Business gets it?
Yes. Just like the bag.
Right.
Yes, correct, so that enables them to make sure that they can buy products that would comply with the disposable foodware standard.
What's the alternative, is you bring your own cup in? If I want to go to the corner for a cup of coffee, I've gotta bring my own cup with me?
So.
Or pay extra?
Yes, that is correct.
I don't like that, but let's go ahead, I don't want to stop your thing, I'm against that.
Okay. The other issue is for on-dining premises, we would expect for on-service dining that the restaurants must use reusable foodware for dining on premises. Staff recommend that this become effective 12 months after the adoption of any ordinance. So the food has to be consumed on premises, the food and beverage would have to be delivered to the customer, and the restaurant would require assigned seating or designated seating. So that would define dining on premise.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Even if it says biodegradable and compostable? Those plastic bags are single-use plastic bags that we don't like. This is marine compostable and all that, you still gotta pay 25 cents?
Yes, if it's a single-use item.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, just because, just because something says compostable or recyclable, doesn't mean it is. There's no law requiring that that be honest. That's number one. And number two is, it's exactly what we do with bags.
Bags are different, though, yeah, bags are not biodegradable, these are biodegradable.
Not necessarily, you don't know that.
Well, the six on the bottom of the things, are we gonna question whether it's really a six or it's a five? I mean, if there's gonna be false labeling, there's nothing, everything is up for grabs at this point.
No, but there's no law around that, there is law around.
Didn't we just, didn't we as a city say that we've gotta have marine degradable and all that? We set that standard.
We did, that's for our own internal operations, and, but unfortunately, our recycling and compost systems, they, they'll take those products in, but the systems that we have.
These are good, it's plastic. If I leave, if I leave coffee in here for another hour, it's gonna come leaking out, and it's gonna make a big mess, which is different than those awful plastic bags that blow in the wind and get in the food stream and the microfibers and all that other stuff.
All right.
Anyway, okay, I'm sorry.
Councilmember, Councilmember Devine?
I just wanted to say that I don't think this 25 cent fee has anything to do with whether it's disposable or not. Has to do with the vendor paying for the recyclable, sustainable, whatever, equipment, food products, reusable cups, bags, whatever, correct?
That is correct, to help make sure that those products are available.
But that's not what we're, I mean, the point is whether it is a truly compostable cup or not, you still get the 25 cents, unless you bring your own cup. I mean, sometimes I can bring my own cup places, but not all the time, and it seems a shame that I get a, you know, a truly flimsy little piece of paper now. They're not even the styrofoam, which I agree, all that polystyrene is bad stuff, but this is just, I could plant this in my tree, and it'll fertilize it if I wanted to, probably. No?
Maybe, maybe, can I, maybe, maybe not, you don't know that, so that's number one. But really, where we're trying to go is, we're trying to eliminate throwaway items of all kinds. And it's hard to do, so all we're saying here is, we're not saying somebody can't do it, they have to pay a quarter. And that's gonna encourage some number of people to bring their own cup, and that's a good thing. That's all I'll say.
All right, let's continue with it, let's have the staff presentation, and then we can get into it as much as we want.
So another item that we would like to have in the potential ordinance is prohibition on single-use beverage bottles for still water. We'd still allow single-use plastic bottles for carbonated water, unflavored water. The reason we recommend this, because we believe this is a good starting point. Still water presents a really good starting point. In the United States last year, over 5.2 billion bottles of still water were consol, were consumed and sold within the United States. So again, this is, and elements begin to change behavior and to look at different ways of being able to get still water.
Let's just wait until.
It's just a clarification.
All right, then you, and then Councilmember Najarian.
I'm not getting into an argument here, just, just back, did you say, this is just for municipal operation? Just for ourselves?
Correct, you're correct.
Okay.
Okay, are we waiting until the end?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, that's what you're saying, you're saying just water and just municipal?
Correct.
When we're talking about municipal, let's say.
Talking about the city.
Within the city building, or if, for example, our Parks Department organizes an event, and they're at the place, and somebody needs water, we can't give them still water?
Correct.
In a bottle?
Yes, but there'd be other options.
In a plastic bottle?
In a plastic bottle.
But you can give them in aluminum bottles, reusable bottles, aluminum cans.
Yes.
We can give it.
And we could have the gallon jugs.
They have the cartons, they have cartons of water now?
Yes.
Okay.
How about mountain spring water?
I don't know, I think.
Which is different than a municipal source, I presume. Some people do not drink our municipal water, although it's very clean, they insist on mountain spring water. Let me add another twist, how about alkaline water, which is still water, but it's got that funky alkaline pH thing going? How does that fall in your definition?
If it's still water in a single-use plastic bottle, we recommend that it should be prohibited.
Okay, regardless of the source of the water, or the alkalinity, or the pH of it, okay, thank you.
All right, please continue.
We would have exemptions from certain parts of this ordinance for potentially undue hardship, and that would be for, primarily for situations around restaurants wanting to implement dishwashers for the reusable dishes and plates that we're requiring them to have. We would obviously not want this, some ordinance contravening any food or health and safety laws. And also exemptions pertain to individuals bringing their own food into the city to snack. Obviously, this would not pertain to them. As with the on-demand, the disposable foodware accessories ordinance that we've passed, enforcement will be an issue for us to address. So we try to look for alternative methods of how we could potentially enforce such an ordinance. We did reach out to Los Angeles County Department of Health. For example, they inspect over 668 establishments within the city of Glendale, and they would potentially partner with us to, when they go in to inspect those establishments, to find out whether that establishment is complying with the ordinance, has knowledge of the ordinance, and then provide that information back to us. And then we could go ahead and follow up with those establishments that may not be complying or following the ordinance. But again, it would be complaint-driven, we wouldn't be proactive going out to enforce this particular ordinance, so that is something that City Council needs to be aware of, and I think we brought that up last time, too. We think there'll be minimal impacts on regulated entities. Shifting to compostable products is unlikely to cause significant economic hardship. Unit cost increases for items are small, and in some cases, availability of products, alternative products is equal or of lesser cost. And it would just require certain staff training on these different products, how they would be used and everything. But we feel that's not too much of a hurdle for the potential effective establishments to overcome. And here are some examples of products that cost more, that cost less, alternatives, and we're lucky to be based in Southern California, where there's more of these products available than potentially other parts of the country. Sorry, I'd like to mix up a little. So our intention is to receive guidance and feedback from City Council this, this evening to see how they want to proceed with the development of this ordinance. We'd want to do extensive stakeholder engagement between January, January and March on this, and potentially come back to City Council in April with an ordinance for introduction, adopt the ordinance in April, and then through April through July of 2023, help organizations to make sure that they're in compliance. The County of Los Angeles has a similar ordinance that is going to affect in May 2023. The City of Los Angeles has a similar ordinance that's going to their City Council in December. And a number of surrounding cities, Burbank and others, are also contemplating looking at similar ordinances. So if council does decide and wants us to adopt such an ordinance, we'll be like right in the middle where other organizations, other institutions are adopting very similar ordinances as to what we are proposing this evening. So alternative one is for council to provide direction on what they'd like to see in this ordinance. Or alternative two is to not provide direction on the proposed plastic waste reduction regulations, and direct staff to make changes to the proposed plastic waste reduction regulations. And then finally, obviously, council may consider any other alternative not presented by staff. So I know I've spoken quickly, but I will be available to answer any questions City Council members may have.
All right. Who would like to go first with questions or comments? We do have two callers, but do you have questions?
No, it was kind of a.
Okay, all right, then let's go, let's go to the callers, and then afterwards, we'll turn to comments. We have two callers.
Craig Cattawalder, you have three minutes, go ahead, Craig. Craig, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me? You have three minutes, go ahead. Craig? Go ahead.
Is Mr. Caldwell older there?
Yes.
Craig?
It doesn't sound like we can hear him clearly.
I can't hear you. Craig, we cannot hear you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Craig.
Okay, maybe we'll have a get a better connection if he calls back. Let's go to Jennifer Pinkerton?
Jennifer, you have three minutes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening, I wanted to thank the council for considering this motion and to advocate strongly that you do adopt it. It would bring Glendale more into line with what the number of cities and counties across California are doing, as well as some other major cities in the country. Regarding the bottled water, it is not, that's actually a reasonable step to take. You may be aware that LAX Airport banned the sale of bottled water earlier this year. Part of the reason that LA is proposing the same is that bottled water conveys the impression that municipal water is not safe. There are apparently a lot of misunderstanding about that, so I think that's one reason to ban the sale. Also, it's extraordinarily expensive. And you may be familiar with the Blue Communities Initiative that is working against bottled water and promoting tap water. On the second point, I'd like to say I do encourage adoption of the 25 cent fee. Anything that can act as a disincentive to people using single-use disposable items is a good thing. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, next caller?
Monica Campagna, Monica, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council, this is Monica Campagna calling in. I just wanted to start by thanking staff and council for considering this item. Thank you to David Jones and the staff for all the work that they've done on the report. And just want to commend you on all the, on the aggressive nature of this. It's so needed, we need to normalize reuse, we need to normalize the concept that, you know, when we use something, we have to do something with it afterwards, and what is the most responsible way to do that? Of course, reuse, but when we can't do that, we need to be thinking about these other options, so thank you. I do support the cup charge, I think this behavioral shift is the big thing that we're trying to get to, and this money will make that much more possible. Those cups, you know, they, they often have wax. Those cups, you know, they often have wax linings, sometimes they have plastic linings. You just can't trust that they're okay to put in compost. Now, we all have the organics recycling to do now, and compostable items are supposed to go in there, but not if they're lined. So if you start taking that out of the equation, it's a little easier for restaurants to then take their compostables and know, okay, I'm using things that actually can go in the compost bin here. And then those things can be taken away. Now, those are more expensive to dispose of, so there's another motivation to go to reusable items when you're in a sit-down situation, if you can. The other point I wanted to make is at the recent tree planting up at the sports complex, Glendale Open Space and Parks Foundation, or the city brought up a big, you know, jug of water, a huge jug of water, and it was perfect. You know, we did have bottles with us and we filled them up, and those who didn't, we were able to use paper cups for that. You know, you could bring reusable cups. That would have been even better. And I could borrow home and wash them. I'd have been happy to do it. So that's the points I think I wanted to make. And I just, lastly, food-soiled products can't usually be put into recycling. So just a reminder that even if we do switch to things that the city can accept in recycling, they're not going to take something's food all over it. So compostables best. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all your hard work on this. It's really exciting and really needed, and thank you, thank you. Bye-bye.
Craig Cattawalder. Craig, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Craig. You've got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Craig Cattawalder. I'm speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation's South Bay chapter, and I strongly support this item coming back to council. I'd like to mention that last time we addressed this in March, there were 150 ordinances statewide on plastics. Now it's up to 158. I would like to address the beverage bottle recommendation, and we would like to see that cover all beverage bottles, not just water, and also have a staggered implementation to start with city facilities and then later on expand citywide. I'd like to point out that San Francisco International Airport has banned all single-use beverage bottles, not just water, and they have 16.4 million people going through that terminal every year, and if they can implement it there, I think you could probably implement it anywhere. Under the disposable foodware standards item, I see a recommendation to have PFAS-free. I think it should be required that any items be PFAS-free and DPI-certified. I would like to point out that the City of LA is working on their expanded polystyrene ban, and in their sequel findings, they actually determine that by eliminating expanded polystyrene items, it actually reduces greenhouse gas impact. So by continuing with them, you're having higher greenhouse gas impacts than you'd have otherwise. Lastly, on the March 22 meeting, the motion that was passed was to come back with an ordinance. And rather than wait till April to address an ordinance, I think it makes much more sense to adopt an ordinance and then do the outreach based on what's actually in the ordinance rather than the other way around. So I would strongly encourage coming back in December or January with an ordinance and then doing outreach following that. We have lots of people that will help with that. So I strongly encourage going forward with this and appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I would be happy to work with the city as I have before to help implement any areas of this. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
All right. Thank you. That was the last caller.
Mayor, no more callers for this item.
Who would like to go first in terms of comments or questions you may still have for staff? Councilmember Najarian, go ahead.
So I agree with most of this, but let's do something with these cups. Can we look at this from the other side? Can we say that you get a 10 cent discount if you come in with a, with a non, with a reusable cup? And I think it makes a difference, because I think about it differently. Hearing that I have to pay 25 cents more to use this cup is much different than thinking I'll get 10 cents off if I bring a ceramic mug or whatever. And maybe it's just a play on words, but someone talked about disincentives, and I think it's clear psychologists will tell you that positive reinforcement has a much greater impact on changing behavior than negative reinforcement. So I just want to throw that out there. And they should be able to absorb a discount for someone that brings in a cup. That's, that's my one comment. My second question, David, on page five of the report, when you're talking about the reusable food, it says, the second sentence, it says, disposable paper food wrappers, comma, sleeves, comma, and bags, semicolon, foil wrappers, semicolon, paper napkins, semicolon, straws, comma, paper trays, comma, shall be allowed for dining so long as they meet disposable foodware standards. Do foil wrappers ever meet a disposable foodware standard? Or is that just like never going to happen or is not current technology? Is there? I mean, I don't know. I'm just.
It's my understanding that the foil can be, go into our recycling stream because it's metal, so it's just used to hold, like, hold the, because you get, like, usually you get like a paper plate, they put the burrito, whatever it is in, they wrap it up, and then they wrap the food, the metal food, to hold it into form. So if you take that off and it's got no contamination on it, that would be.
So it can meet those, it could meet those standards, and if it does, they can use it.
Correct.
I guess those semicolons kind of threw me off for a second. Straws, in other words, could not be plastic straws. They would have to be composite or.
Paper.
Oh, now you're talking about this paper again. We don't know if it's disposable. Anyway, okay, I got you. I'm okay with that, but let's, let's be positive in our reinforcement instead of negative in our reinforcement. I just want to throw that out. That's all. That, I've said enough today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Who would like to go next? Go ahead, Councilmember Devine.
Okay. You know, change is difficult for everyone, and this is pretty aggressive change. I disagree with the caller that we should establish the ordinance and then do the outreach. I think giving the grocery stores, the restaurants, et cetera, fair warning about what's coming is the way to go. So I think, I think that we're doing it the right way. We have to make every, all of these reachable and attainable. So we have to make sure that everyone has the information that they need to attain these goals. I think, you know, I went through and I was going for each item, doable, not doable, doable, and most of them were doable. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. And so I think that we're on the right track. I think that, thank you, Dr. Jones, for this, because I know this was a lot of work, a lot of work on your half, your behalf, and probably Elizabeth and anyone, everyone else that's involved. So this is so good for the environment. It's a step towards sustainability and clean air, and I'm, I'm all for it. I'm just worried, the one thing about the big box stores like the Ralphs and the Vons, and how do they handle this kind of a switch so, you know, that they're going to have to be doing?
Councilmember Devine, thank you for elevating my education status, by the way.
It's okay.
One day I'll get there.
I consider you a doctor.
I think for the big package stores, I think it's probably easier for them because they have closer relationships with their supply chain, and they have more power because of the volume of goods and purchases they buy to turn around to their supply chains and say, look, we need to, we need to change the packaging and what these types of foods come in. So I'm more confident that they will be able to comply. I think we're going to have to really help the smaller businesses to make sure that they can comply with this.
Yeah. I think that, you know, we can pass ordinances till, what, to borrow an old time phrase, till the cows come home, but the enforcement is, is the problem. And I see a real problem here. And in the survey that was taken, only 25% of the respondents indicated that they are working towards eliminating or reducing the use of, the distribution of single-use plastics in their establishments. So that's going to be a lot of hard work to get them up to, you know, this 25% up to at least, let's, you know, if our goal is maybe 75% of them, that would be, I think, a real accomplishment. So I think dealing with the enforcement is, is going to be a major issue. So if we use the LA County Department of Public Health, I don't know if my math is correct, but that would be like $20,000 a year for 668 sites.
That is correct.
That's not, that's not much. That's, I think that's within. And then we would also have this be complaint-driven. You know, even now, I can go to, and I cite this often, I can go to Honey Baked Ham and get no plastic utensils, and they wrap the sandwiches now in paper, not in those little plastic. Then I go to Vons, to the Panda Express, and I get styrofoam, I get the, the plastic, you know, utensils, et cetera. So it's like, it's the right hand, the left hand. So I think we have to work really hard on, on the enforcement. Otherwise, I think it's, it's really good. It's great for our community, for our residents, and for our businesses. So thank you.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Asadran?
I have, I have a number of things, and please bear with me, because this has been one of my highest priorities since, since before my first election.
We will bear with you.
The first thing was, I have to say, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done on staff, but I was disappointed that this was not an ordinance, because council gave direction when this came to us in March to prepare an ordinance. And we actually discussed all these things. We discussed the 25 cent cup charge. We discussed all, pretty much everything on this list. And we said, prepare an ordinance and bring it back. And I don't know why we're rehashing all this. It seems to me, anyway, I'll just say, I'm disappointed. The other thing is, as far as this question of, do we do the outreach and then the ordinance, or the ordinance and the outreach? The outreach is, is education. The outreach is not to get input into what our ordinance will finally look like. So to my mind, the logical thing, the way we usually do these things is we pass an ordinance, it's got a 12-month period before it comes into effect, maybe not for everything. We can, I'll come back, I want to clarify that, but, but let's, but we can always do that. We could say, let's pass the ordinance now, and then we're going to give, it's not going to go into effect immediately. Some things maybe after six months, some things maybe after 12 months. I think we're going to give maybe smaller operators more time than larger ones, or whatever it might be. I think that's the appropriate way to do it. We pass the ordinance, then we go out and we do the education, which obviously we're going to have to do a lot of education. And then, you know, and then it goes into effect. So that's, that's where I would be. I would really like to go back to what we, the direction we gave to staff, which was to bring back an ordinance. So that's on kind of macro. Actually, a point of clarification, so you're saying that the items one through five, you know, that have that chasing arrows, one through five and seven, these would come into effect 12 months after we pass the ordinance? But are you saying that the polystyrene, the extended polystyrene would come into effect immediately? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So the ban on number six, extended polystyrene, that would be, as soon as the ordinance adopted, that would come into effect straight away.
Okay, but we could say, we pass the ordinance, we could say that the polystyrene comes into effect, make it Earth Day, you know? That gives, what is that, mid-April? Right? That gives, that gives people time to get prepared, right? I mean, that's kind of what, what I would like to see us do. And then the other is 12 months, which, which should give plenty of time. So that's, that's what I would say. It's interesting, Councilmember Najarian, you talk about the getting a discount. This is actually a subject of economics. It's called behavioral economics, and actually, there's a theory of loss aversion. And the theory of loss aversion, basically, and there've been experiments to demonstrate this, people will do more to avoid a loss than they will to gain something. So if you charge somebody, they will do more to avoid that charge than if you give them a discount for doing a good thing. So I don't want to sound like I'm all about negative reinforcement, but I will tell you that, that the economic literature, without any, there's no, there's no debate about this, says that it's much more effective to charge than to give a discount.
I'm talking psychology, Dan.
Well, that's what it is. Behavioral economics is economics matched with psychology. So the reality is, no, I mean, this is established. We will get more effect if we charge than if we provide a discount, which is why the bag fee is, is a fee. The other thing is.
About anger of the residents. So that's what I'm kind of.
Well, the other thing is that that money does go to the merchants, and that helps them defray all these other costs, you know, for what it's worth. Anyway, I'll say that.
Starbucks doesn't even let a union in their shop. What are we giving them the extra money for? Sorry, Dan.
And I should point out also, we have this hardship waiver process, which I know, you know, Mr. Jones mentioned, or Dr. Jones mentioned, but maybe not, it wasn't emphasized enough. So there are hardship waivers. So, you know, anybody, if, you know, if you have an event and it's just not practical to bring a big container of water, let's say you have a, you have, you know, AYSO, you have a bunch of kids out on the field, you know, I, well, I think I guess this bottle thing doesn't apply to that. But anyway, they're, you know, they can say, you know, it's just not practical to do this, they can get a waiver. So we do have that process, which is, I think it's important in this. The PFAS-free thing, I think that should be a requirement when we set those standards, that, that the items be PFAS-free. So even if they do meet our composting or recycling standards, or, you know, what's accept, what's accepted in our programs, they still have to be PFAS-free, right? That's what I would ask, that that be part of that. And then, I am getting there. I would say for the, the banning of the water bottles, and I'm hoping my colleagues hear this, because I want to get, I want to get support for these things I'm saying, I'm not just saying them for the ether, but on the banning of the water bottles, because this is just for the, just for us, I would say at this point, we should do, we should do it for all drinks, not just, not just water, but also carbonated and, you know, it's us. So, and, and I think that's what, you know, we heard them mention San Francisco Airport did it across the board, it's not just water. And my understanding is that's where Burbank, LA County, and LA City are going, is to do that across the board, not just, not just still water. So I would ask, I would ask for support on that, to make it across the board. Again, it's just municipal operations, it's not the whole community. Okay? Let me, I'm almost there. Containment, oh. One of the, one other thing that I brought up, and maybe we'll take this up another time, but I just, I mentioned this last time in March when we talked about this, there's a state law that says that if you bring a, your own container to a, to a restaurant for takeout, that they are allowed to put it in your own container. Previously, they weren't even allowed because of, you know, health requirements. Now they are allowed, but they're not required to. So you could take your container and they'll say, no, we're not going to put it in that. I don't know. I think that if I'm bringing a container, I think they should be willing to put it in. So I'd like to consider that maybe in the future, saying, if you bring a container, the restaurant does need to put your food in the container. Unless there's something that I don't know about. What?
Leftovers?
Or just takeout.
Oh.
Like, let's say, like, I'll go to, I'll, I'll bring my own little container, I'll go to Scafs or whatever it is, and I'll order something to go home. I don't want them to wrap it all up, I want them to put it in my little container. I know I'm a little obsessive about this, but that's what I do. Now, some places will not do it, and some places will. I really don't know why they would not do it. But anyway, maybe we can explore that, but I don't want it to get, delay any of this. Okay? I think that's everything I, I have. So the main things are the PFAS-free, I do support the 25 cent cup charge, and, and, and that's that. Enforcement is really, I don't know, we're going to need to be creative and maybe get some, some, some community groups to help us, because even the skip, the. some, some, some community groups to help us, because even the skip, the stuff with, with, with the, yes. No, even, even the skip the stuff right now, they're not supposed to drop, they're not supposed to drop plastic straws and, and utensils in your bag when you take out, unless you specifically ask. But how many places are still doing that? A lot are still doing it. I mean, I went to, not to point a finger at anybody, but I will, I went to Rockbird, and I, you know, and I was really happy that they didn't use styrofoam, they used paper to put the stuff in. I was like, "This is great." Then I opened the bag, there's plastic fork and spoon in there. So like, we got to get, we got to get to these people. I don't know how we do it, we don't have the staff to do it. We're going to need to get some groups to help us do some education, maybe we get some, like, plastics ambassadors out there. I'm not saying, like, batting, batting, you know, beating people up, but educating. Okay? So...
Okay.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Roman. Just by the way, Rockbird, great place, Scafs, great place, same owners, by the way, the Scafs family.
Is it? Same owners?
Yes, it is.
I didn't even know that.
There you go. So maybe they should just talk to each other. So I'll pick up the phone, put phone receiver to receiver. Councilmember Asadrian?
So I obviously support most of this. I have some clarifying questions. The single-use beverage bottles, when we say, just on municipal properties, so when he mentions, like, AYSO, even though AYSO is renting our space, are they not allowed to use any bottles because they're technically on our property?
So, Councilmember Asadrian, that's a very good question, and we had to deal with that when we did the first ordinance. So from memory is, if AYSO has a contract with us, who comes in and rents our facilities, and we are providing the bottled water, for example, in that case, we wouldn't provide them with the single-use bottled water, we use, look for an alternative to provide them. And the one gallon, as you mentioned earlier, with cups, so they would have the water. If it's an individual just coming on and using our facilities and bringing their own water, no, this ordinance obviously would not affect them, would not impact them. Regarding city operations, it's like, we often have city meetings where we provide single-use bottled water, city events on city properties where we may be inviting people in, at those type of events, we would not be providing single-use bottled still water, or potentially, or single-use bottled waters.
So, I'm in complete support of doing away with single-use bottles for meetings, our events, anything that's happening at City Hall. I'm, I'm thinking about, let's say, a 5K run, and the Parks Department's organizing, and we're up the hill, and somebody needs water. No one's carrying that giant drug up. How are we getting the water to the person? I just want things to be practical, right? And so, in reality, is this going to work in these scenarios? And if there's an alternative, then walk me through it, so I'm educated on it.
So we would have to, I don't know yet, we have to think through all those alternatives, and if we had to carve out an exemption for a race or something like that, I don't know, we'd have to do that. But I think we could probably stage, if we know there's going to be a race, or a marathon, or 5K, whatever, and the planning of that race, we'd be able to stage these water stations, so that water would be available to those people. I mean, they'd just grab the cup, drink out the cup, and the compostable cup, and just put it in the bin as a, as a running bike, so.
Or, if I might, you could also get a, you can also apply for a waiver. So if it turns out, really, there's no way to do it, then the, then the...
Correct.
The event, we'll just request a waiver.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, I keep hearing about enforcement, and before we start enforcing left and right, I want to make sure that our small businesses and our restaurants, who tend to also be immigrants, who may not be speaking the English language, are actually educated on this, and they are not turned villains into, like, not following this, because I think, when, when people are busy trying to put food on their table, there are things that are priorities for them. And so, I don't know what that outreach is going to look like, but I want to make sure that before there's any enforcement, that there's proper education with our restaurants and our small, small businesses that are going to be affected by this, so.
Yeah, Councilmember, that would, that's going to be absolutely critical, as we go forward with this ordinance, doing that outreach. And we've learned a lot of lessons from doing the outreach on the disposable footwear accessories, how we can improve our outreach process. So we're looking forward to trying to figure that out, and making sure everybody can comply, is aware, and that the city is here to help them too.
Thank you. And thank you for putting in this effort. Great job.
All right.
Just a follow-up on some ideas.
Sure. Councilmember Najari?
So, okay, so we have a Caesar Chavez Day in March, and we have entertainment, we have catered food, and we have buckets of water, and we have buckets of, perhaps, of soft drinks. So we're not going to be able to give them a bottle of water? And the alternative would be to have just a big jug with paper cups that everyone fills, drinks once, and throws away? Think this through, David. I mean, how would you explain that to me? This is, we've been called, someone has called on you to prepare an ordinance, and unless we vet all these particular nuances, it would be premature for us to vet, to put forward that ordinance. So what would you envision? How would you envision Caesar Chavez Day? Okay? We've got tacos, and I think they have hot dogs, they've got, you know, different types of food. We used to give them water, in a bottle.
So I guess the question is, who's providing the water? If we're having catering, or something like that?
It's a city event, the city sponsors it.
Okay. If the city's sponsoring by our definition, if we're sponsoring over 50%, then they would potentially have to comply with the ordinance, where they would not be allowed to supply bottled water. But that doesn't mean that we can't supply water in other...
We have a hose, we turn on the hose, and everyone gets a, you know, spell it out for me, seriously. I mean, let's, let, everyone, you know, we talk about these great concepts, let's spell it out in reality. What are you going to do? Have a big jug, one of those igloo coolers, which may have this polystyrene as insulation, by the way, let's not get into that? And a stack of cups, and you go up, and everyone's hand gets on the spigot, and they, you know, kids, they wipe their nose, and there it is, and they're getting a glass of water, cup of water. And then you've got an empty cup, maybe the kid goes three, four times for a cup of water, and tosses it around. How is that, how does that meet our goal? And how does it deal with health issues? I mean, there is something to be said for the single-use container for health issues. And that's just one event that popped into my mind, Caesar Chavez Day. Because I used to love to get a nice, ice-cold bottle of water when I had some of that spicy food, in a hot day.
So, I'm not exactly sure how the Caesar Chavez event is set out, but I can, I would imagine that in planning that event, we would be able to establish hydration stations throughout the area of that event. Maybe we could, people coming to the event as part of their attendance to the event, the city could provide them reusable bottles that they can go to those hydration, hydration stations with, and fill up those bottles, and so they can keep them with them. I think we would want to be able to, with the hydration stations, where you're not necessarily touching stuff so much, you just put your cup under it, and it'd like auto-fill it, so they could put their paper cup under that, take it away, have their drink of water. And then we'd make sure that there's the appropriate bins for them to put those paper cups in. It's, maybe it is not ideal, but I think it's the process of beginning to address that we cannot continue to keep using single-use plastics, and we have to be aware of it. So making people think outside, like, "Why am I using this paper cup? Why am I having to go to this hydration station?" Will make them think about that. So I think, logistically, if we think through it, I think we can overcome to make sure that people are able to hydrate themselves. And again, potentially, have a, whatever final direction we get from council on the ordinance, maybe those carbonated water bottles could be available at those...
I mean, so, so some of this ordinance is great. I mean, the polystyrene, I think, the food containers, the raw, you know, the meat dishes that you get, I think that's very doable, and I, I fully support that. It's just, when we get a little bit further on, I, I think I see some problems with it. And I am totally against some sort of private inspection crew going around finding violations of this and reporting it. I can imagine what that's going to look like. You know, wearing green shirts, and marching around, and, you know, taking names down, and photos, and all that. I think that's going to tear this community apart, personally. But most of this, I'm okay with, it's just these, these, you know, the practicality, I think runs into some trouble. I appreciate where we're going, I appreciate Mr. Brotman's efforts, we've done a lot, seems like every week or two, we've got a sustainability issue before us, and we're marching forward, I think faster than any other city is marching forward. Others maybe are, are ahead of us, but we're catching up to them, no one is, no one is catching up to us in terms of how fast we're advancing. But I just want what we do to be accepted by the community without any animosity, hostilities, and it to be very practical and usable. That's all I want. That's the only way I'm thinking of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, a couple of thoughts on this. I, first of all, thank you for, for bringing this forward, and I thank everyone who's worked on this, everyone who's contributed to it. I do think that a lot of this is doable, some of it may take some time, some of it will go through some growing pains. We have emphasized the importance of education and outreach, and I want staff to truly utilize every available outlet, from television to digital, to even texting members of our community to help educate them, directing them to pages that will give them clear and simple answers. You know, we are now setting aside organics in our homes, in terms of our food consumption, when there's eggshells or food scraps, we're supposed to put them in a separate bag and a container. I'll be the first to tell you that it's taken me a long time to do it, and I still mess up. The other day, I threw a banana peel into trash, and I just let out a "doh," but I wasn't about to fish it out. Councilmember Roman may have, and I, but that, I did not, and, and I am guilty, mi aculpa. And, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm human. I hate paper straws. I, there's nothing worse than trying to drink soda with a paper straw, but I've tried to train myself as best as I can to avoid straws completely, as best I can. In terms of the water challenge, whether it's at events or anything, I do think that there's a light at the end of this tunnel. At my son's school, a Glendale public school, all the kids are encouraged to bring water bottles, and in the morning, you see these kids go to school with their backpacks, and along with their backpacks, they're calling, they're carrying their water bottles to school to use the school's fountains to hydrate themselves versus bringing plastic bottles. I mean, some of them are reusable plastic bottles, but they're more heavy-duty ones, not these throwaway ones. And why that's important is when we're talking about some of these throwaway plastic bottles, only 3% of them actually get recycled, or have recyclability, recyclabil, yeah, recyclability, versus cans, aluminum cans, which have, I think, close to 70% recyclability. And I have attended certain events recently where you do get a carton of water, you get a aluminum can of water, those can certainly be options that we can explore. The cost may be a little bit more, but when we're looking at what challenges we're facing, when you think about, you know, the photos, or the images, or the challenge of the Great Pacific Trash Island, which is this large mass of garbage floating around in the Pacific Ocean, that's causing serious damage to all marine wildlife. And it's real. I mean, it's not imagined. A billion snow crabs and king crabs disappeared this year, and Alaska, for the first time in I don't know how long, canceled its crab fishing season. These are serious, serious issues, and they're happening in our lifetime now. I'm not a scientist, I don't know all the connections, but people whose pay grade and knowledge skill level is far greater than mine are saying that these are connected, and if there are things that we can do to mitigate these and stop these, and try and improve our quality of life and the longevity of our planet, the only one we have, we should do it, right? It's possible. I mean, look at McDonald's, how many folks here remember, I mean, we have a very small audience left here in the chambers, but y'all probably remember, McDonald's had those iconic styrofoam clam shells, do you remember those? And, you know, sometimes there were even art projects, some of you may be old enough to remember doing art projects with styrofoam egg cartons. You know, you won't find styrofoam egg cartons anywhere. McDonald's phased out its styrofoam containers in 1990 and did it successfully, and has replaced all of their packaging with paper. It is doable, it just takes the will to do it, and I think that we need to do our part in that effort. Now, I think that there are some valid points brought up about various city functions, how we're going to do it, how, and I, what I like about the city aspect of it is that we will lead by example. If we can show that the city can do it, then we can ask other folks in the community to do it. But let us lead the way. I think on styrofoam, I agree, Councilmember Asadrian mentioned, reaching out to small mom-and-pop establishments, the smaller businesses, and I would have ambassadors, city folks, not volunteers, going to them with examples of various types of packaging that they can replace what they otherwise would use, showing them what options there are, giving them alternatives and websites where they can connect with vendors, whatever it may be, showing them what is out there. And I also like the fact that we're moving in this direction regionally. We have been a leader, thanks to this council, every single member of this council, and council members prior, and moving in this right direction, doing what's best for the planet, doing what's best for our residents, doing what's best for the environment. It's sometimes ironic, I do, I do share the frustrations, that the more we do, the more seems like we get beat up on a number of other issues when our neighboring cities aren't nearly doing as much as we are. And, and we tend to be the target of the ire and frustrations of many people in the community, when it would be nice to see some of those other cities. Sorry, Burbank and Pasadena, but it would be nice for you guys to get some of the heat that we get for the things that I believe we're doing properly, and perhaps people feel that we're not doing quickly enough. So I do support this, I would like to see it implemented. Timeline-wise, I'm flexible, I will go along with whatever my colleagues decide, but I appreciate the effort, I appreciate what you've brought forward, and I think that we should do this post-haste, and make sure that we, we, we start and, and do it in a way where we can get maximum compliance and success. And, and I, and I do support the 25-cent charge, I think that that makes sense, I do agree. It is annoying, I'll tell you, the plastic bag issue has, I don't believe, worked, because now I feel like there's prevalence and proliferation of those thicker, seems almost like they're worse plastic bags than they were before. And I don't know how we solve that issue, but, you know, our problems are man-made, our solutions will be man-made, so we, I'm sure we can figure that out as well. But let's take this step in the right direction and remove these plastics from our community.
Can I make a motion?
Any, any other comments? If not, sure, go ahead.
If anything else?
Yes, Councilmember Asadrian?
You had made some recommendations, is that for now?
Yeah, I was going to just list some of these items, there are not many.
Can you go, yeah, can you go through the beverages?
Okay. So my motion would include, you know, everything that staff is recommending with, including the 25-cent cup charge, and the, but I would say the PFAS-free should be a requirement. And beverage bottles for city operations, I would request that they be all drinks, not just still water. There's no reason to make it just still water.
We can't have, we can't, we can't have sodas and...
If it's in a can, you can.
Yeah, in a can, you can.
In a can, you can. An aluminum can, you can, you can have it in a plastic model.
Yeah. And, and my motion would also be that... And my motion would also be that we, that staff bring an ordinance now. We pass that ordinance and then we, it doesn't go into effect as far as the polystyrene goes. We can make it April 15th, which gives four and a half, maybe four months. I'm just picking that because it's Earth Day. Isn't it Earth Day always, April 15th?
April 22nd.
Oh, 22nd, okay. Make it Earth Day. But anyway, I mean, the point is to give a lead time, so it's not immediate. And then on the other items, already staff's recommendation is a 12-month phase-in. Those are, those are the items that I would...
If I could add to your, I'm not sure how the ordinance is gonna be written, but the enforcement part, if it's gonna be part of the ordinance. I would request that, what I've requested with the small businesses and taking into account the education piece, be incorporated as you're thinking about the enforcement portion.
So maybe it's phased, maybe I don't know how you guys are gonna be writing up the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, we probably need clarification on the motion that Councilmember Brotman cited. And I apologize that you're disappointed that we brought this back again to council, but the staff has done a lot of work and you can imagine, based on the discussion and conversation that we had, not everyone on council was in agreement with what they had heard before. So I believe this process was productive. As far as the phasing of the outreach before we introduce the ordinance, that's what Councilmember Brotman has included in the motion. But are you, Councilmember Asatrian, asking for the outreach to be done before we bring the ordinance to council?
No, if the ordinance is gonna outline some enforcement and how you're gonna do the enforcement, I wanna make sure that that enforcement is done in such phases where automatically somebody's not going and getting ticketed without us doing education. It's not like, you know, we've become this...
Heavy-handed.
You know, the police have come into our restaurants and our ticketing or...
Yeah, we can, Councilmember Asatrian, yeah, we can definitely spell that out, the process that we're gonna go through with enforcement and it won't be citation at the first sign of not complying with the ordinance, in terms of the ordinance. But the clarification that we need is, do we do the outreach before we bring the ordinance for introduction? Or we bring the ordinance for introduction and adoption and then do the outreach and education?
Well, my motion is, pass the ordinance, then do the outreach and education. I think as far as enforcement goes, I don't think that would be part of an ordinance, but that could be part of a policy, that could be part of just what our practice is and I'm happy to include that in the motion, that we adopt that as a policy, which really already is our policy. We're not heavy-handed on these things as it is. So that's, and I would say, you know, Burbank, by the way, is planning to bring their ordinance. You said they're contemplating it, but I understand they're ready to bring an ordinance in January, February. So I would like to beat Burbank.
Well, they're probably waiting for us to finish and copy it and that's what...
Yeah, but I think our ordinance is, basically you have it, right? So I don't think, it's a matter of scheduling more than a matter of staff work. So I think we should bring it forward.
Councilmember Najarian?
Has there been any outreach yet to the Chamber of Commerce, to the trade restaurant groups? I know you've reached out to the Glendale Environmental Coalition and its members, but how about the other side?
We did do a survey originally when we bought it back in March 22nd and we did reach out to the chamber to let them know, to get the members to respond to the survey, but we haven't done any additional outreach since then. Depending on what City Council does tonight, we'll then begin the extensive outreach program to those organizations.
Concurrently with the developing of the ordinance, is that?
Correct. If that's what City Council directs.
Kind of a fair warning. This is coming.
So that's my motion, if there's a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Let me ask a question. How important is a unanimous vote for you on this part of it?
Not enough to take off the 25 cent cup fee.
To reverse it the other way. We wouldn't do that. Okay.
Well, I think that the sentiment, even if there may be some differences in votes tonight, and there'll be par for the course for how the evening has gone, the sentiment is that we're all more or less on the same page with what we want to do for our planet and I appreciate everyone's input and everyone's commitment to this, from the community and from the council and from staff. We've come a long way. Let's have a roll call on this item.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
For the reasons stated, no.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda?
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
And we have two speakers and one caller. You can hang on to the cards. First speaker is Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian. My name is Patrick Murphy and I'm speaking on behalf of the Verdugo Wash Neighborhoods Coalition and savethewash.com. Let me reiterate that we are not a small group. That has been touted and in fact, we are growing steadily, especially since your recent vote regarding the visioning phase of the Verdugo Wash project. I want to address the hearing held on November 15th and the coalition's subsequent email to the four of you who were able to vote. Councilmember Asatrian, calling the integrity of the petition into question because people outside the city limits signed it is insulting and offensive to the 615 people who signed it and the people who worked to collect signatures, especially 80-year-old Elizabeth Annan, who spoke on the 15th and collected signatures in the heat of August and September. Staff allowed residents from outside Glendale to participate in the city survey and they were also allowed to speak on the 15th. We would venture to guess the large majority of the people in favor of this project do not live on the Wash or immediately adjacent thereto. In addition, there are organizations outside of the city of Glendale and the Stakeholder Advisory Group. As I mentioned in the coalition's email to you, a signatory outside of the city may be a family member concerned for their safety. I know my family is. Also, perhaps these people own property on the Wash, they have a voice just like everyone else. Councilmember Brotman, at the candidate forum in Rossmoyn, you stated that you wouldn't shove anything down anyone's throat when speaking about this project. We expect you to live up to those words and suggesting the side roads should be studied is forcing it down people's throat. When I study something, it is with the intention of moving forward. I spoke with LA County Public Works today and they stressed that the side roads are used for maintenance. I will also provide evidence of the danger of fire on the side roads shortly. Councilmember Devine, as I mentioned in the coalition email to you, we are shocked at the reversal of your position. You have indicated on several occasions and to several people that you thought it should stop at the basin. You stood with me and Julia Lieber in her backyard and said that you wouldn't want it here. This condition of the Wash, abutting backyards, exists up and down the entire Wash. You mentioned losing funding a few times during the hearing, however, gave no specific details. In addition, if funding was proportionately lost for debris basin and points north, why should that matter? If there is no path, there is no need to study it and spend money on that study. I'm sure the taxpayers would be proud of that. We can only guess that there may have been outside political pressure that was brought to bear in this instance. We all saw the $6 million check being presented by Assemblymember Friedman, standing in the Wash with special interest groups, representatives present. Mayor Kasakian, the coalition is especially disappointed with your vote. You mentioned on many occasions that the path should terminate, paths should terminate at Verdugo Park. What happened? Councilmember Devine, you asked a question about crime. Atlanta needed a dedicated 15-member police force after a significant crime increase. Crime has decreased since the path force has been put in place. You also asked about property values. They increased in areas where there was blight. None of the areas along our Wash are experiencing blight. We will provide more research and information in the near future as regards these two items. Staff cannot cherry pick answers. They need to provide complete information. The coalition's aim is to educate the community at large and this council so that you can make informed decisions based upon complete and accurate information. We expect all of you to fulfill commitments to put the coalition on the Stakeholder Advisory Groups in the future. I will repeat, the area north of the basin has been designated as an extreme fire hazard zone. Recall that 95% of California fires are started by human activity. Here is an exact example. A homeowner recalled in on the 15th experienced a fire to his fence. Thank goodness he came home in time to extinguish the fire. The tree next to the fence was singed. The fire department said that it was likely caused by a pedestrian on the side road. A match and rubber gloves were found. No number of fire-resistant plants will stop a fire in this area, especially if a fence catches fire, as in this case. Also, the police department would not take a report because it was too small of an incident. In September of 2017, the police chief was told by the fire chief that his worst nightmare may be occurring due to the Latuna Canyon fire, which spread to the area, and that the entire Whiting Woods area, including Sycamore Woods and surrounding neighborhoods, came close to being evacuated. It is the primary responsibility of government to protect its citizens, especially the most at risk and vulnerable. Remember Betty Annan, the 80-year-old? She will be 81 soon. She deserves to be protected.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next speaker is Mr. Vartan Garpadian, followed by, we have two callers. You have five callers now? All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before my time starts, may I just make a quick comment regarding what Mr. Najarian said about the commission on the airport, Airport Commission position?
Sure, yes, please.
It was not my vote against your, I remember you nominated yourself, it was before my time. When I got elected in 2015, Mr. Quintero was on the Airport Commission and I waited for, I don't know, a year, year and a half as a courtesy to him, for him to finish his term and then I was appointed to that term. I would have never voted against any of my colleagues who wanted to be appointed to any of these boards or any boards of commission. And so as Mr. Quintero goes, I think, I think he's been there, done that. I think it's time for him to move on and my understanding is most of his time is being spent in Beverly Hills with his grandchild and I think it's the right thing for him to just pull his nomination and so Mr. Councilmember Asatrian can be appointed to that position. That's my personal opinion, but nonetheless, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, Mr. Mayor. My name is Vartan Garpadian, longtime resident of Glendale, since 1999 in Verdugo Woodlands. I think I wasn't going to speak tonight, you know, in the spirit of the Christmas, New Year's and holidays around the corner, but I received several phone calls from residents. I met with over 100 people in different residential neighborhoods and they're very concerned about the Verdugo Wash project and this is a serious concern. The public safety, security, parking and traffic issues that will be imposing on our neighborhoods, noise pollution, light pollution, loss of privacy, loss of property values, the environmental impact of this project after it's built and during the construction. It is, we don't know how long is it gonna take to build nine and a half miles of concrete platform inside a concrete flood control channel. Just let's, just switch off for one second and understand what we're trying to build, a concrete platform for nine and a half miles inside a concrete flood control channel. I think the fact that we wanted to do a cost-benefit analysis first, it's a good thing. I think we need to pause this project, get that study done and understand, is it even doable or not? Just bear in mind that the grants are taxpayers' money as well. We may have a grant for 6 million, 10 million, 20 million, but this is taxpayers' money as well. How long would this project know? It is impacting, it would be impacting our lives during the construction and I don't think any of you would want that in your neighborhood. There is no need for this project. This project is unwanted and unsafe. Rossmoyn doesn't want it, Verdugo Woodland doesn't want it, Whiting Woods doesn't want it, Oakmont Woods doesn't want it, Sycamore Woods doesn't want it. We don't want this project in our neighborhood because when they say it's in your backyard, this is literally in our backyard. If you even look at our Google map, from Louise to Mountain, where Glen Oaks, East Glen Oaks and Ethel is, the entire area, there are over 200 homes that butt up against the Wash. Verdugo Woodlands make that three times more. And if you go one block east and one block west, all these properties that are going to be affected by this project, there are thousands of people. And we, I don't understand why this is being really ramped through when there's this much opposition to this project. If you, if the goal is to create a green space, inside the concrete flood control channel is not the place. We are really blessed and privileged to live in areas that we have thousands of trees, bunch of greenery. The people in our neighborhoods, they do what this project is trying to create or the environment to create, is walking, biking, jogging, running. We all do that already. We don't need this in that area. If we wanna do something good, create green space, do it in an area that is really impacted and is park poor, like in South Glendale, build a big park, build a bicycle park that people can use. We are park rich. We have Verdugo Park, Babe Herman, Glorieta Park, we have Sandal Field, we have Skateboard Park, we have all these amenities in our neighborhoods, but this is going to really affect our quality of life. The crime is a huge issue. I think part of the reports should have been the Santa Ana Wash and the Wash in Riverside, the city of Riverside, and get those reports and put it as part of our basic study and see what the impacts were there and the crime that was, that's committed over there and they kind of banned the people even using that area. I think, again, pausing this project is the right thing to do, to do the cost-benefit analysis and find out if we have funding for it or not. When we purchased our properties, we never thought in our wildest dreams that something like this would be built in our backyards behind our homes. So we appreciate your consideration in doing the cost-benefit analysis and I think, just listen to your constituents, they really do not want this project in their neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have some callers and we have, the first caller is Judy Schlegel.
Judy, you have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Judy.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Judy Schlegel. I'm a 45-year resident of Glendale and currently homeowner in the neighborhood of the proposed Disneyland-like bike path on the Wash. I am calling in tonight to stand in my position as I did two weeks ago in front of you, all pleading to not go through with this poorly, poorly planned project that will tremendously impact our neighborhood by means of safety, traffic, air pollution, privacy, construction, inconvenience, wildlife, and more. I know the bike clubs want this, but in reality, have you taken account of the members of the bike clubs who actually live in this affected neighborhood and who own homes on the Wash that will be impacted? Do they want this through their backyard? Also, I still don't believe there will be staff to open and close the gates to the entrance right in our neighborhood. Big problem. Laura Friedman tonight said, oh, it would be good to have the kids ride their bikes to Glendale College. Well, what's gonna happen at night when the gates are closed and they can't continue on that path? I implore you all to rethink and deny this project and put the millions of dollars into better and more productive use for the actual citizens and homeowners of Glendale, not those who just want to ride through it. Find them another city. Find them another city. I believe if any of you on the council had this project go through your backyard lurking in your yard, you would all think differently. Thank you.
Edwin, you're next. Edwin, five, you have five minutes, Edwin. Edwin?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Edwin. Edwin, can you hear us? Diane Martin? Julia Leeper? Julia, can you hear us? David Tarlongo? David Tarlongo, can you hear us? Karen?
Hello?
Karen, can you hear us? Betzoki? Can you hear us? Karen, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello, Karen. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Hi. Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for taking my call. I second everything that Patrick from Save the Wash, Judy, and all previous callers against the Wash project, but I will extend it.
Yes, we can hear you. Please, continue.
Go ahead, Karen.
But I will extend most and all of his points to include the parts of the Wash that are bordered by homes on the southern or the western southern portion of the Wash. Let's put this $6 million into South Glendale. You want green spaces? So do we. We don't need to spend this money to study an environmental impact. If we think there's going to be one, there most likely will be one. I'd really appreciate it if we kill this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Martin? Diane, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have five minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I, again, am in agreement with Patrick, Judy, and all the people who have spoken before me regarding the Wash project. There is tremendous issues, and all of them have outlined them, and I am just here to echo their statements, as well as very concerned about high brush. And there was fire brought up all through the night, tonight, as I stayed on the call for a very long time, and ma, major concerns about our environment and the risk of fire in this area. We are the highest area above, from, in this area with risk of fire, and none of that has been taken into consideration in many other situations tonight, you have mentioned that, but I am in agreement with Patrick, Judy, and above, to please protect and save above the basin to stop that project. And also, that, I'm sorry, I'm going in and out, and also, that you consider all the, as you've all said, all the engineering issues, all of the risk of fire, and also, just what this would do to a very private community that has many options of biking, hiking outside of the Wash. Thank you.
Edwin, you have five minutes, Edwin. Go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmembers. How's everybody doing today?
Well.
That's good.
Thank you.
I have two questions I'd like to ask. I just wanted to, first one is, are you, Councilmembers, going to be at the Montrose Christmas Parade this year, which is this weekend?
I think most of us are planning on being there and being in it, yes.
Okay. My second, most important question I'd like to ask is, I'd like to know, does the Glendale Police Station have a conference room that is available for the public to use? The reason I'm asking this question is because, for example, let's say I own a $20,000 Rolex watch, and I tell the buyer, we're going to meet inside the police station conference room where we're going to do the transaction to sell my watch to you. For my safety, I'm not going to let you meet at my house. So, my question is, is there a conference room available for the public to, to do transactions of selling their valuable jewelry necklace and all other valuable items?
That's an awfully specific hypothetical, but.
There's always a lobby.
There's always the lobby has, of the police station where I'm, I don't, I don't know if we're encouraging those types of transactions, but if that's your concern, Edwin, you can definitely meet someone in front of the police station.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I like to do. It's like, nobody wants to, nobody wants to sell their expensive jewelry at their house. It's better to come to the police station for safety reasons. So, I don't know if you guys have a conference room or not, but I'd like to see if you guys can make one available for the public to use when it comes to selling valuable items that they own.
Thank you for your call. I appreciate it.
Bye.
Good day. All right, no other callers, or do we have a few of the folks called?
Mayor, I have three more callers.
Please, let's, I know that we tried to get to some folks and we weren't able to. Let's get to it.
David Tarlongo, you have five minutes. David?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks first to Mayor Stokian and the rest of the council for taking my call. My name is David Tarlongo. I live in Sycamore Woods. I've lived here for 32 years, and I find it difficult to understand or to comprehend how after so many people have spoken, and so many individuals have written in, sent emails, made phone calls regarding this project for the bike path, and somehow it seems like nobody's really listening, or, or at least perhaps listening, but not really fully comprehending. The, the people that are against this project live along the Wash, and when you live along the Wash, you have a huge investment in the neighborhood. That's why we bought our homes here. And to think that this is a good idea by just pushing this through, and everybody talks about, we don't want to force anything down anybody's throat, well, that's kind of what this looks like. It certainly looks like that. And most of the people that are on the council, as a matter of fact, I would have to say all the people on the council I voted for, because I really felt that everyone there has the people of Glendale's best interest at heart. But in this particular circumstance, I would have to say, I'm not quite sure I believe that. Because granted, you got $6 million to spend, and I know that no one's going to send it back, but if I remember correctly, city staff specifically recommended that the study go as far as the debris basin, and then stop at the debris basin, and then take a look a little closer at all of the data and the information that's been collected on that study, going up to that point, to see whether or not any of this is even feasible. And going north is not recommended, simply because the environment is considerably different than south of the debris basin. And the southern portion of Glendale has been pretty much over time somewhat neglected from the standpoint that they don't have the same types of green space that we currently enjoy up on the northern portion, whether it's Duke Majin Park, or CV Park, or Montrose Park, and a lot of the other spaces in between, even the smaller ones that are available, like New York, or Two Strike, or some of the other ones. All of these things are available to us in the northern section. The southern section is the area that needs more green space, more recreational space. So coming north, this isn't anything anyone wants. Nobody up here is asking for this. I'm an avid bike rider. The idea of a bike path is great, but not going through anyone's yards, and that's essentially what it is that we're doing up here. It's going through people's yards, and it's a bad idea. And the fire part of it, too. We've had difficulty getting fire insurance. We had already had fire insurance at one point and got canceled, simply because this area is so heavily wooded. I have 21 trees just on my property. I have one oak tree that the city, I had the city come out, the city arborist come out and do an evaluation of my property and the trees on my property. And one of my oak trees is, is thought to be at least 300 years old, and another one somewhere between 150 and 200. That's the way this whole area is up here. And the thought of a spark, or any potential fire danger up here at all, is a scary thought. And it's something that I think we need to look at very closely, besides all of the other reasons I've indicated.
Thank you, David.
To eliminating the, moving forward with this project.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia Leeper, you have five minutes. Julia, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm actually on the board of the Verdugo Wash Neighborhood Coalition, but also referred to as Save the Wash. I've been very active in the community and Neighborhood Watch for 40 years, and I need to tell you, I've received a great deal of feedback from Sycamore Woods neighbors regarding the council's recent decision regarding the bike path. I can confidently tell you, the vast majority of Sycamore Woods do not support the path above the basin. I was beyond disappointed by your vote at the last council meeting, where many residents spoke in person or by phone, expressing concerns about public safety if the bike path were to continue above the basin, particularly since the northern portion has been identified as extreme fire hazard area. I also had to change my fire insurance because my insurance company canceled. The increased fires are making the insurance companies really take a look at, you know, where they're, they're allowing coverage. So, I, I just can't understand why you unanimously voted to reject the city staff's recommendation to not study the northern reaches of the Wash any further. I mean, it was just a shock to all of the coalition supporters, it really was. But, you know, having said that, it may surprise you to know that I love the idea of a bike path. It's much safer than riding on the road, particularly with kids, and I'm a grandparent, so I appreciate the concept of a safe place for families. However, the location has to be appropriate, such as a route that passes by many businesses and restaurants. The north of the basin has no, no shops or restaurants, rather, north of the basin is entirely residential, and would literally be free, would literally be feet from many homes. Neighbors would surely lose the security they currently enjoy, and the very reason they bought their home, for the tranquility of living in this canyon. The path would certainly change these dynamics. I understand bike enthusiasts support a path, but I wonder if it ran adjacent to their homes, if they would be supportive. Neighbors have very valid concerns, how the police can patrol its use. Some portions are extremely secluded, and could be an invitation for those seeking to be beyond the view of law enforcement, particularly at night. I'm very concerned that may lie ahead for our neighborhood if the path is built in our backyard. As we have stressed, we are very worried about the dry hillside that have not burned for over 60 years. And the suggestion adding drought tolerant planting would prevent a fire on the hillside is simply ridiculous, as it's not going to prevent a fire from spreading for miles. And lastly, this is a bit off topic, but I would just like to mention that I was taken aback, Mr. Mayor. You admonished some speakers for their conduct and requested all of the speakers address each other with respect. However, when a woman caller referred to the coalition as loud, bold, white, wealthy people, those comments were allowed. I'd like to mention to the record, the coalition is diverse in ethnicity, age, and financial status. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, we have, I believe, one more caller?
Correct, Mayor. Rod Bearden, you have five minutes. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council for taking my phone call. There's really not a whole lot more I can add to the pros and cons of the Wash that we've been talking about, but I would like to add that the further north you come, it's a totally different environment up here than it is to the south. I live, I'm the HOA president for Mountain Oaks Park, and we have so much vegetation in here and wildlife. We're actually, the Verdugo Mountains, the base of the mountains, is about half the length of a football field to the Wash. Many, many things can happen, being that close to the Wash. We have so many species of wildlife in this area, in this open space called Mountain Oaks. They're everywhere. We had just a few days ago, a full grown bear and his two cubs walked through the meadow. We've got four, five, six-point buck deer in here. We, we have bobcat, we've got a couple of mountain lion that frequent our area that come through. It has actually been to my front door. We have several covey of California quail, which is a state bird, I believe, and that is protected. So there's so many things that could, that could be destroyed and never to return. If anything is done, especially close to Mountain Oaks, we're going to lose, we are totally going to lose a lot of valuable wildlife. I'm a lover of wildlife, I'm a little lover of open space, and would like to see that to, to continue, to stay available to, to people that are on the same page as I am. So, again, please, please consider what's going on, and, and stay away from the north end of the Wash. It's, again, it's a totally different terrain, and we think, or I think, and a lot of us do up here, that it does, will not work well for the Wash and for the trails, and maybe spend that part of the money on something else in the city that needs it much more than we do. We have the park right here, we have trails through here, we have La Tuna Canyon trails that come up and around. So, there's plenty to do that's already here and been here for years. We don't need an addition. So, anyway, I appreciate you taking my call. You guys have a Merry Christmas, if I don't call in before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, same.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. We have some new, new business. Before we do that, let me just say to the caller who said that I was not fair in my treatment of individuals in the audience, my reason for bringing down the gavel on the individual who was sitting in the audience, who spoke out of turn and without having followed the protocol and procedures of the council, was for that reason, not necessarily the content of what was said. The person
The person who said what they said, who I don't necessarily agree with, and I don't agree with the way it was said. I think that we can all be more careful with how we choose our words, but they said it in the appropriate way in the sense that they called in and as caller, the podium was theirs. Plenty of people have come into these chambers, and from this very podium that I'm looking at right now said some of the most vile things that I have ever heard in my life. But that is what democracy is about. That is what free speech is about. I won't necessarily have to agree with what you have to say, but if you do it in the proper way and the proper form, that is what this country affords you the right to do. If you speak out from the audience, the gavel will come down. And if you do not follow the rules of this chamber and proper engagement of the council, there will be consequences such as removal from the chambers to allow for the city to conduct its business and for people who do follow the rules to be able to be heard, period. So with that, we have new business. Let's hear who would like to make the motion.
I have it. So I would like to move that the city attorney's appointment of Carl Arias as principal assistant city attorney for the city of Glendale is hereby approved. And further, that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the city of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article, what is this, 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
Second. All right, we have a motion. The second was made by Councilmember Najarian. Your mic was off, but let's have a roll call, please. Councilmember Asatryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Katsakian? Yes. Entertained motion now to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second, we stand adjourned at 10:14 PM. Thank you for everyone who called in, came and spoke, and to my colleagues. Good night, good luck.